Good morning. The Wednesday session of the Kansas State Board of Education is called to order. A couple of announcements. I just, as you know, the Commissioner's not with us because his wife is having surgery today, and I just got a message back from him that says she is currently prepping for surgery, and so he'll be sending updates throughout the day. I want to acknowledge this is at least the 29th anniversary of the nativity of our member, Dina Horst, and congratulations on reaching another milestone. We appreciate it. I will not sing again. At this time, a motion would be in order to approve today's agenda. Kathy and Tannen, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Nine, one. And we go back to roll call. Please show that all members are present. We are going to be discussing the Kansas-Kin outcome of kindergarten readiness. First of all, I need to make an announcement. Chris and Robert from NASB were scheduled to be here today, and they, one for health and one for scheduling reasons, were not able to be here, but they are planning on being here for either our March or April board meeting to visit with us. They will be on their way to Colorado for some things, and so they wanted to also visit with us while they were here. So I'm sorry that they weren't able to be here today, but they are planning to come later. Tiffany, it's all yours.
Thank you, Brad, for your support. And Julie, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Julie Ewing. I'm the coordinator for kindergarten readiness.
We're going to give you an update today. First, I want to thank you all for inviting us to share with you all the great work we've been doing in kindergarten readiness over the last, well, I came on in July, but lots of things have happened prior to that with your guidance, and so I appreciate the opportunity to come back to you and share what's been happening. And also, I want to thank the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner for their support with kindergarten readiness, also, as well as Ms. Colleen Riley, which is my director in the back there, supporting us today, too.
She's way back.
She's way back, yeah. She's, but she said she's there. Just know she's there. So we're trying to give you, we'll give you some updates, and at the end or throughout, however, when you have questions, please let us know. That's the thank you to you guys for including us and inviting us. So as you are aware, the kindergarten readiness is to ensure that every child, every kindergartner age five, is socially, emotionally, and academically prepared for success as they enter their first grade in kindergarten, or their first, possibly first chance or opportunity to attend kindergarten. And some of the things that we've been talking about over the last several years is how do we, how are we going to get there? So one of the things we talked about is we need to have some consistent data statewide so that we can look at that data and make some informed decisions as we move forward. We also want to build some community partnerships so that we're not just having districts try to struggle about how to do, work with just their district and use, utilize their community resources they already have available around early learning to maximize the current funding that we have. And then, of course, as we move forward, some of the strategies and areas that we want to support is parent engagement with the community, teacher readiness, to make sure that they're ready for those kids that are showing up in their classroom, of course, leadership support at the state, as well as at the district level and school level, and then using those evidence-based tools and implementation for the field. I gave you a handout on this because it's kind of hard to read there, but we had been working on school readiness. I was at KSDE back in 2010 to 2013 in the Early Childhood Special Ed team, and together we had a community of early childhood partners from Head Start at the state level, KDAHE for Children with Special Healthcare Needs, and Part C, as well as KSDE staff. And all of us came up with a school readiness framework, and so what you've charged us to do is something that we had been building on over the years, trying to get kids ready for school. So I just thought I wanted to make sure that you understand, this is something we've been working on, and some of the core components are listed up there, which is community, family, child, and educational environment. It can't, it's not just about one of those, but all four of those components, and then there's some guiding principles at the bottom there that we have identified, seven of those for children to be successful. So we just went out and did training with the Brooks team, which is the ASQ Ages and Stages Questionnaires, and we went across the state, and we've also provided some core kindergarten readiness tools to the districts. Every building has the ASQ 3 and ASQ Starter Kits available to them. That includes learning activities, as well as the professional development that we're providing them, some coaching and some webinars that we're going to be leading them through as we get ready for August 1st, which is our launch date for the first data collection. Thank you, Julie. So what do they, what do those tools measure? And they are a parent-completed tool, and what we're asking parents is prior to them coming to kindergarten, the Ages and Stages Questionnaire, which is the third edition, is actually looking at their communication, gross motor, fine motor, problem solving, and their personal and social abilities. And then the Ages and Stages Social/Emotional is the second tool that we're asking them to use, which is going to ask parents about how the children are able to regulate their emotions, how do they interact positively with other folks, adults and children, and some of their social, other social/emotional skills. So I just wanted to give you a kind of a quick, there are six steps, six easy steps is what we're sharing with the field on how to do the ASQ. Understand that the Ages and Stages Questionnaire are also completed by physicians. Sometimes when children are, when their physician is concerned, their pediatricians also can do the Ages and Stages Questionnaire and have the parents complete that at the doctor's office. It's used widely by all of the early learning programs in the state that are state-funded. So the kindergarten readiness, adding this tool to our toolbox for schools, is a great transition from all the other providers they see prior to coming to school. So one of the first things they're going to do is find out what the age of the child is, and then they're going to select the questionnaire according to that child's age so that they can make sure they're asking the correct questions. They can either do that on a hard copy that we provide to them or online. The schools can send the parents a link where they can complete it online, and they can complete it on their smartphones, their iPads, their computers, or they can send a hard copy in. So all of those options are available to families, and the school just gives that to the parent in whichever way they desire. They want to roll that out, and the parents will complete that and either bring it back for the teachers to input the data, or they'll input the data directly, the parents. So one of the things that we ask them to do is just fill out the questionnaire at home. It's asking them fairly simple questions about what their child's able to do, and they're asking, can they do it now? Have they done it occasionally? Or can they, are they masters at it? Are they already doing that skill? And so the parents are really asking, you know, on each of those, yes, not yet, or emerging. So those are how they are. When they do it online, it scores everything for them and sends that information to the school. If they do it on hard copy, they can bring it back to the school. The teacher enters the data for them, and it'll score it for them on the online tool. And then the next step is really to share those results with the parents, right? So parent engagement is a really important piece of this, where we're going to share with the parents any areas that the child might have some areas of need that we want them to focus on. And so with that, we have the learning activities, which is some sheets that provide information to the parents on things that they can work on them. If they're struggling with fine motor skills, like using scissors that we talked about earlier, or writing with their, you know, crayons or something, they're going to give them some opportunities, activity sheets they can share with their parents to take home, so that they can work with those kiddos at home and at school, so then both the teacher and parent know what's going on with that child. So we did complete, we went, and there were 261 districts that came to our trainings across the state. We went to nine locations with the Brooks staff and KSDE staff also, and trained over 600 kindergarten teachers, lots of great questions and interactions with the teachers themselves, as well as asking good questions and next steps. And then they also brought some of their early learning staff who may be in the pre-K programs or Parents as Teacher programs who already use this tool so that they can help support each other as they move forward and have some common language as they talk about the kids. And we did have 25 districts that were unable to participate at any of those nine locations. Some of them, as we've reached, Julie's reached out back to all of them, a few of them have already had training, were pilot projects the previous year, so they did not need to attend, and a couple of them are going to attend. We're going to have a training at the KDEC conference available to those who weren't able to attend on March 2nd, and then we're also going to do an online webinar. One of our trainings were recorded, so that recording will be broken up into sessions, and we'll do some online ASQ webinars for those specific districts to target them to make sure that they understand how to use the tool as we move forward. So next steps are really that. The districts are now, they have a trainer in their program, at least two folks from each district were asked to attend, and those two folks will then go back and train all their kindergarten teachers so that they'll be able to use the tool beginning August 1st. Our data collection we're working towards is August 1st to September 20th, so that they can actually do the screening at the very beginning of school. After September 20th, some of the questions were, what do we do then if a child moves in after that? We're only doing a kindergarten readiness snapshot, so we're not going to ask them after September 20th to go out and continue to gather data. It is truly intended to be right at the very beginning of kindergarten, what's happening with those kids when they came in, and what skills do the teachers need to be working on with them for classroom practices? Yes?
Kathy Bush has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for bringing this information to us. Would you, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but would you share so the folks online, the Ages and Stages is the, is the tool that we are, statewide we're using as far as kindergarten readiness? There's not options for districts? This is the tool?
Correct. Yes, that is accurate. The Ages and Stages Questionnaires are tools that were decided by a kindergarten stakeholder work group, which included kindergarten teachers and early learning folks, as well as state-level staff, to try to determine what tools are already out there instead of recreating a tool that could be used for this. And so, yes, it is the Ages and Stages Questionnaires that were determined as the final result.
And then, again, for our audience, once these questionnaires are completed and compiled, the expectation is those results are then shared with the parents?
Absolutely, yes. In whatever way they decide, some of them said, do we need to have, can we share this at parent-teacher conferences? Absolutely, that was one option that they could do. If there's concerns that are identified before they're going to do parent-teacher conferences, they can always reach out to the parents prior to, and maybe even let the parents know ahead of time. If we have some concerns, we'll let you know ahead of time. Otherwise, we'll discuss it with you at the parent-teacher conferences. So those are some opportune times they can already use that they have built in.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Yes, I'm ready. So one of the things that I want to share with you that's really exciting, we just launched in the last probably 30 days, is the Brooks has worked with us to create our own Kansas Kindergarten Readiness website, and that is the link to take you to the agesandstages.com/ks. One of the, it has a tremendous amount of information on there, so if you would like to know more, please go out there. There are short, five-minute how-to webinars for administrators, teachers, parents, whoever wants to go on there and look at what's happening with the tool, how to use the tool. There are Ages and Stages Frequently Asked Questions document that we prepared from all the questions that we gathered across the state at the nine training of trainers. There was a lot, so we, they did a really nice job of putting like little radial buttons so you can, it doesn't go on and on and on. You can just click the radial button that's most appropriate to the section that you're concerned about, like how do you get the key codes to sign up for ASQ online, those kinds of things. So they have those, that we also have a few remaining, we've already had a few of them already, where they are the Frequently Asked Questions Online Live Webinars that we have with Brooks. So teachers and administrators can call in on those days. We had one yesterday where they can call and ask any question that they want. They have 24-hour support to our teachers and parents that they can call the one, they have a number, a customer service number, 24 hours available to them, and they can also email questions to them. As well as, at KSDE, we have set up a website, or an email specifically for our entire early learning team. That's called earlylearning@ksde.org, so programs can also email us, and that way, if I'm out of the office, someone else on my team can answer those questions. Yes, Chairman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm back again. When folks-
We give her a limit.
Okay. I'm reaching it. When folks are actually beginning to use this live, is there going to be a plan for extra support from the department? So when they're, something isn't going quite like they thought it should be, that they'll be able to call in or send questions in or whatever, that they can get pretty immediate feedback?
Yes, great, great question, because we know August 1st will be, go live, and that will be when they will want some, if any questions are coming up. So we will continue to provide throughout the summer and from now on, they have the ability to go in and practice. They gave us some, it's not typical, they usually have, once you sign on, that your number adds up, the funding that we're going to have to pay for every screen that's done. They have allowed us to use up until August 1st, practice time for all districts to go in and use the tool all, you know, whenever they need to, as they train. And August 1st, our team will be available to support them, as well as Brooks. And then the, this website will remain up so that they can get 24 access to some of the common questions and some of the videos that'll help them, support them.
Have you checked with any districts to see if they're starting? Because I would, I would envision some folks, some districts may have like computers set up at enrollment-
Yes.
-and they'll be doing this at enrollment. Have you checked to see if anybody's doing enrollment before August 1? Some of them might be. I don't know.
There were a couple of them that they mentioned that they might do it like the last week of July or somewhere in there, and what we've said is that you can set up the online access and provide hard copies to parents anytime you'd like to, but we actually want them, and the hard copy is a recommendation for them to send home with the parents anytime they want. They could do that now and say, this is what we want you to fill out beginning August 1st for next year. So they have the tool available to them now, and that, that's a great question. A lot of them ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Ken Willard has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What provision is made in the training or in practice for the case where a student clearly is not ready, maybe by the end of kindergarten to go on? What, is that included in this training or?
So that would be truly a district decision, but what we have encouraged is that the child at the age of five is a civil right for them to be able to attend if the parent wants them to. The parent does not have to do that, but then providing that support to the teacher who would need some of those extra supports for the children, that would be something that they would have to look at. What is the need of the child? There are some technical assistance providers out in the field, and there are also funding for some pre-K programs for at-risk kiddos that they could get involved in and enrolled in prior to kindergarten. So there are some options, but our goal is to get them in the school and then try to get them, if they're not ready then, that the teacher use their instructional capabilities to meet their needs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Great question. Okay, so I just wanted to show you some examples of what they have on the website. Instead of cruising over to the website, I just created a couple slides here. They have a quick reference guide for both administrators and teachers. They're two separate guides that they can go to and look up common questions, as well as the Frequently Asked Questions document that I mentioned. And then they have those recorded online modules, and they truly are like five or six minutes long. So how do you get signed in? How do you get started? How do you, as a teacher, set up family access, or as an administrator, set up family access? So you have a link to send out in your newsletter or provide the link to the family so they can have access to that and go input their information. Preparing for suggestions for teachers, how to prepare the teachers to talk to the parents about what they're going to be answering questions for, and some tools. Like one of the questions might be related to, is your child able to roll the ball across the room and then run and get it, or whatever? And so if that's the case, when the parent goes home to do this, they would have to have a ball to practice with their kiddo. So some of those things are giving them, you know, when you go home, here's your hard copy of the questions that are going to be asked, here's the tools that you need. If it's blocks or scissors or something like that, then they have a small list of those items to send home. And then interpreting the results, what data, how do they enter it? Where do they enter it? Interpreting the results and next steps. And then they have reports where they can go in and run reports as an administrator or a teacher to get information about their classrooms, and what areas maybe, maybe they have four kids that are struggling with fine motor with scissors or other, you know, writing, alphabet, whatever. And so then they could focus, the teacher can then spend time focusing on, a little bit more time spending on instruction in those areas. And this is what I was mentioning about the live question and answer sessions that we have set up. The first two were for administrators. A lot of administrators knew that trainers were out getting the information, but the administrators were wanting to know what, so what do we need to know now that the trainers have went and got the training? The administrators also wanted to know what they needed to know. So we did the first two specifically for administrators, and then all the rest of the question and answer sessions are available for anyone to attend and ask questions to Brooks and KSDE. So what are we going to do with the results data? One of the things that we're working on, we have a presentation at the KDEC conference, which is the Kansas Division for Early Childhood in Wichita at the 1st of March, and we're going to talk to them about all the resources that they have available. One of the resources we included, I didn't bring it with me, it's up on my desk, but it's Ages and Stages Learning Activities Book, and it has handouts in it. You can do them online, or you can have the book also. If you have the book, you can get it online, but they're handout sheets to send home with parents of different activities and skills that the kids can work on with the parents while they're at home. So that gives them some of those resources that the parents may need to help support their kiddos and those activities. So there are guides and intervention activities, as well as some parenting tips. They have newsletters on the ASQ website and those online reports that help them identify where the strengths and areas of challenges are for those kiddos that they can go and pull information for. Some of the questions our team is talking about that we need to address in the future. So after we look at the data, what are the next steps as we determine what are some of the essentials that the communities and schools need that they don't have prior to those kids getting to kindergarten? What's happening in their early learning world? Do they have programs available to them such as pre-K, at-risk, or Parents as Teachers, or other early learning programs that are across the state, Head Start and so forth? What are the implications for distribution of resources? How do we get them out there? We're going to keep the online Kansas Kindergarten Readiness website available for people to get to easily. We also have them on KSDE website and a link to that back and forth in case they're on the KSDE website. And then what are the needed professional, for professional learning as we move forward? And we are using a lot of the tools and resources and guides that Brooks uses for the Ages and Stages tools. We plan on setting up some coaching so we can do some follow-up as you guys had asked the questions about what are you going to do if they identify questions or concerns? So those coaching webinars, as well as possible onsite roadshows next fall to help support the schools with what are they doing with the data? What do they need to know from the data? And what do the teachers in the field need? And kind of a follow-up to our training that we did this year. So what, what else are you needing? What other concerns do you have? And how can we support you? And then Julie did mention she would talk for a couple of slides, so I'm going to let her, pass it over for her to talk about the kid's ID.
Well, the early learning programs we've looked at, they didn't have a kid's ID, so we're going to have them start using a kid's ID, and that collection will be for all children, pre-K through grade 12. That way, we can look at the data and look at them when they're in Parents as Teachers or three-year-old preschool, and we can use that Ages and Stages throughout the time that they're in school. Whoops. And why do we want to collect information on all early learning students? Well, we want to know how many children districts are really serving to better inform and communicate early learning needs across Kansas. If we don't know those children, we don't know who we're serving. So we want all students in early learning programs to be collected, and it doesn't need to be funded, but it doesn't need to be tied to a funding stream, but we just want to know who those children are.
Sally?
On the collection of this information, how do you do that? I mean, you go through all of these programs in a community that have kids, and what if the kid is in two programs at the same time? Are they assigned a number to where you know that, or?
In the kid's collection, it will be only for students that are in school districts, but there are certain codes in kid's system that will show that they're in Parents as Teachers, and they can be in four-year-old preschool.
So that, so we're only identifying preschool children by if they're in a public school setting?
At this time, yes. And as Parents as Teachers, which is associated with a school district.
But that is a great question, because as we had a data work group from the field, including all of early learning programs such as Head Start and some of the other programs that are not run through districts, they have asked if they could use the kid's ID so that we could have a true longitudinal data collection, kind of knowing what programs kids have been in. And so we are working with our kids team now to identify how they could do that and what information they need to collect, and if parents and other programs would like to participate in that.
So you're going to have to back up a little bit. So my concern is that when we get done, we will not have a very accurate picture of how many we're serving and how many there, we don't know how, who's out there that we need to be serving.
So that's a great question that, obviously, we have to take, I hate to say baby steps, but baby steps. So we're starting with our school districts, because that's really what we know we can gather that data. So all of our programs in the school districts will be collecting that data. We also have relationship with KDAHE, which is like the infant toddler programs, and Head Start programs through the state department, and if they are interested in, and we can pull their information in, that would be great. We do have a number of, estimated number of children in a specific age group, as well as population, you know, like how many three-year-olds, four-year-olds, or five-year-olds are across the state. So then we can kind of determine gaps in services. So in this community, here's how many kiddos they have in their population, and here's how many are enrolled in Head Start, here's how many are enrolled in programs through the district, and/or here's some other. So the difficult part will be like those private preschools or church-based preschools that we may not have data for, and trying to figure out a plan and how to get that data. So it's not that we don't want it, we're just trying to figure out a way to get it.
Well, I think it's important as we start these early programs that we've gone into communities and said, you know, we don't want to be in competition. We want to just make sure the gap is filled-
Absolutely.
... with early childhood. And sometimes how you gather data reflects your true thinking, and so I just want to make sure that we've got a plan to keep going.
Yes, thank you. I think that's really important because it is a collaborative. Early learning is all over in all different programs across the state, not just with KSDE. So building those collaborative relationships with some of the other state agencies and local programs is really important for us. So thank you for asking that question.
I have a question from Ann.
Thank you. I know every time you tag somebody with an ID, there'll be concerns. So who gives out the ID and who keeps track of it? What's it look like?
In our kid's data system, we have a unique-
Is that a department data system?
Right.
Okay.
So every time a kid enters kindergarten, they're given a- they're given a, assigned a unique student identifier. Uh, it's like a 10-digit that's just unique to them. And the only value of that number is for this agency to, to be able to follow them through graduation.
How long have we been doing that? Are we just starting?
Um, yeah, 20 years.
So, so all the kids that have been in school have had this ID forever?
Right. So when we say kid's ID, um, it's kind of one of them acronyms. It's, uh, the Kansas, um, it's an acronym, Identifying Data System. But since we don't collect social security numbers, um, this state made a decision years ago. Um, so what we're trying to do is start with, if we know that the kid, I'm going to say 95% of children attend public school. So we know if they're going to end up with one of those numbers when they come to kindergarten, if they're, if they're working in Parents as Teachers, we can assign it a little earlier.
So that's the, the difference now. We're going to try to use it to track-
We're going to try to assign their number before they get to kindergarten a little bit earlier. Um, and there's two differences. One is what do we need to know at the state level? And what's valuable to be known at the local level? So when they're doing these, um, using ASQ, they will be communicating with parents and they will know more about whether the student was in, uh, a private, whatever, because they're going to have those conversations. They'll know more locally. What we will never know is of the ones that are showing up, ready or not ready, what kind of experiences were they having? So we can provide better community supports from a state level. We're just looking at getting that kid's number to the kid earlier before they, they're going to get one.
Are we already doing it for three and four-year-olds that are in our-
That's what they're-
Four-year-old at risk? Just starting now?
No, I, four-year-old at risk has been collected in the past, but not the Parents as Teachers or the Kansas Preschool Program. We have not collected data specifically for those. And, um, in the past, it's because the funding may have come from other sources or just really hasn't been a lot of, uh, energy, because it was more around funding. You know, once they get to K-12, then how, how do we fund them? And then this kid's ID is tied to that. So, um, now we're just moving forward and identifying them a little earlier and getting them in the system. And lots of programs across the state are very interested in using the kid's ID, um, for like early Head Start and Head Start. But they have not ever, we used, uh, Parents, or not Parents as Teachers, uh, Infant Toddler used to use our kid's ID system and sometimes still does. So there are some, uh, but it's typically through a collaboration effort that we've had. We're, and they're asking if they, we could open it up wider so that whoever would like to could participate.
Yeah, I don't know, I want to, just to comment, uh, one, I don't know how many other schools are doing it, but I know, uh, where I live, they're, next year going to offer all day for every four-year-old who wants it. And if they're free introduced lunch, it's free. And if it's, if they're not, then it's only 200 a month. So who isn't going to do that?
Nice.
It's going to be huge. And it runs August through June, so.
Very nice.
It's almost all year round.
Yeah, our goal is to keep that moving, you know, all this excitement for early learning, keep moving forward so that schools can have the ability to do some of those creative things. Yeah. So great question.
Nina?
Thank you. Um, my question has to do with funded and non-funded. What are you, are you talking about, um, students that are at risk and are, um, in a, um, special needs program or something of that sort? So there's funds coming?
I, I think the, the concern is districts have collected that data for kiddos that they need to identify for school funding purposes. And so we're trying to get them away from thinking, this is just about who you're serving. Uh, we want to know the numbers. We would think giving information to you and to the legislatures about how many kids are truly getting served in our districts, which they, we don't know that now because we've just collected funded. Four-year-old at risk, we have that data. We don't have that kid's ID and, and long-term data for Parents as Teachers or the Kansas Preschool Program that we have. So making sure that all kids are counted as part of what we're doing in the districts, I think is really important to share so that people don't think we're only serving pre-K at-risk or only serving once they get to kindergarten.
Another example leads to what Ann just talked about. You may have a four-year-old at-risk preschool. Um, 70% of them are being funded because they meet a requirement. 30% are paying. We don't know that those other 30% are receiving services just because the parent happens to pay. We wouldn't know. We, we would say, well, there's 30% of kids that aren't being served. And we're just making an assumption because we're only collecting the ones that get state funding. We'd like to know, well, what about, because it doesn't tell us a true picture of how many kids are actually being served.
And that's kind of what I thought you might be talking about, but I wanted to make certain.
Yeah, that, that is a great clarification. And I think it's just the way we have asked before has been tied to funding. And we're just saying, this isn't tied to funding. How many kiddos do you have? How many are you serving? Are you able to meet the needs of your community? You know, that, that kind of, um-
Well, and it's sort of like all-day kindergarten that parents were actually paying for their child to be in an all-day program. And there were some who might be in that all-day program because they needed to be because of developmental issues and had the funding.
Right.
So I assumed it was something like that, but.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I did want to go back to, uh, work member Sally. I wanted to also remind you, a special education requirement is to do child find in every community. So we do collect data about how many kids in each community, their parents bring them because they do screenings. There are free screenings across the state and that, which use sometimes the ASQ. But they also do further assessment and evaluations for those kids, and they're free. So special education programs, uh, and districts and co-ops across the state provide that free screening. And so we kind of have another number of kiddos that are in those communities and how many of them are getting any kind of services or not. It's for anyone that might, any parent who wants to know, is my kid on track? So it could be for any child. And it is a special education requirement. So we do have, you know, the schools all kind of have an idea prior to them ever enrolling, how many kids in the, uh, in the area that might have some concerns or maybe just a, a new parent just wants to know. So, yeah, it's real, and Colleen reminded me to share that with you. And I think it's really important because that is how a lot of our programs, Parents as Teachers, Early Head Start and Head Start, if they have some concerns, they can refer to any of those programs. It doesn't have to come to special ed, so.
Steve?
Thank you. Uh, will there be a lot of choice in this? In other words, will, will people be tied to their zip code or will they be able to move around?
As far as the services, uh, for kindergarten readiness, the, wherever they move to, this will be available at any school that they're at. It won't be tied to, um, a zip code, uh, necessarily. But remember, we're only going to do it between the August 1st and September 20th date. So if a kiddo moves in, um, after that, we're not going to be collecting that data.
I'm, I'm saying if someone lives on the east part of town, but they want to participate in the program on the west side of town, they can.
Yeah, I don't think we are determining that. I think those are determined through the district.
Steve, regardless of your zip code, if you're age five, you have access to, uh, to services in kindergarten. So if the child enrolls in a public or private accredited, then they will be using the ASQ for any kid that enrolls. Is that what you're?
Well, I'm saying, I'm, I'm a parent and I live in a tough neighborhood. But I can get my kid to the nicer neighborhood every day. Can I do that?
That'd be a local decision on, on, you know, which elementary school based on. But they, would they have, be able to, like in Wichita? I don't know what Rich, Wichita's, um, policies are for someone to take a kindergartner from one part of the, that's a local. But do they have access to kindergarten? Absolutely.
There's, there's no prohibition on it.
Well, not from a state level. That's, that's, that says you can or can't allow that.
There may be some local districts that have prohibitions.
Well, they, they may have boundaries based on what, what elementary you attend, based on where you live in town. But that's all local. There's nothing from a state level that would.
See, my concern is, you know, the, the, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're doing this on behalf of four-year-olds. But we're sort of building more, more things for us to do instead of truly putting families first. And I, I just think this is something that should maybe come to the forefront of our considerations, choice within the public sphere.
Well, another likely barrier that I run into a lot of times is that it's relatively easy to change in Kansas between one school district and the other, or within a school district. But you have to take into consideration like, is the, do you have 20 slots and are they full? And, you know, that's, that's a, a likely barrier. And, uh, you know, if, if there's 17 people there and you got 20 slots, then the answer may be yes. If, if there's a waiting list, the answer likely would be no.
And there are several key values to this in particular. Immediately at the beginning of the year, it builds a relationship between the teacher and the parent. It informs the teacher of whether or not the, the child is socially, emotionally, academically ready, yes or no, and if not, in what areas. But if the student enrolls in one building in a district and moves to another building or to another state or a school district, this immediately goes with them.
So, and I, I think, I appreciate your question. I think what's so exciting about this tool is that the parent is providing the information to the teachers, the parent. Uh, and it offers the teacher an opportunity to build that relationship because what parent doesn't want to have their teacher say? So how is he, how is he doing at home? I mean, you know, if they're truly, um, building that relationship and wanting to know about those kids, I think this is a really good tool to build that teacher-parent relationship. So thank you for your question. Okay, so one of the other things that we just recently did is posted, um, are all of our early learning grant applications for Parents as Teachers, state pre-K and the Kansas Preschool Program. We just posted them on the website, uh, the first, it's probably been about a week now. Um, they're not due until April 13th. And one of the things that we have clarified with folks in the districts is that final funding appropriations will be determined after the legislative funding has been determined by them, not something that KSDE is determining funding for. So that they clearly have time to put their program information out there, build what they would like to see happen. And then once we know the funding sources in May, June, or whatever, whenever that comes to us, then we determine the funding so that it's two clear steps instead of, uh, a confusion, a confusion about why didn't we get this funding? Or do we not have the services? Or why don't we have enough money to do whatever we'd like to do with our program? So we're asking them, what would you like to do with your programs? And then once we get the funding, we can help sort that out. Um, and Dr. Watson may have talked to you about this previously. One of the things that, uh, we've been sharing with folks is there's the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families funding that has been, uh, in the last couple of years, uh, some of that funding has been earmarked for some of our preschool programs. And, uh, so when he was talking to me about that, I said, could you help me understand that? I didn't really, um, know for sure why the TANF funding would be used for the preschool programs, although kids are at risk, some of them are at risk, and so this could be appropriate. Uh, so what he shared is that the eligibility for TANF, for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families over the last few years has been, uh, the eligibility has been higher and higher for families that are, are less likely to get that funding. So there's a, a, a funding setting out there. It doesn't go back to the feds. It stays in Kansas, but you have to meet the requirements for, uh, at, for at-risk families. So at-risk preschool is one of the areas that our partners at the Department for Children and Families has identified would be a good match for that funding. So if you people talk, hear people talking about the TANF funds, it is intended to help support our, our early learning programs in Kansas for kids that are at risk. And, um, because some of those kiddos and families are not getting that childcare subsidy or other TANF funding that they have previously been eligible for in the past, uh, now are not, they may still be able to get some of those services through their kiddos, through the pre-k, uh, pre-K programs. Um, they do have to be spent on direct services. They are, and they're reimbursed. So you have to provide the service and then you get reimbursed for that service. Um, so we did use that in some programs and it has been identified in the governor's budget as another area for some of our, one of our, uh, Kansas preschool programs. And he can tell you a lot more about that than I just gave you the, the Cliff Notes version of it. But, um, we have been working really closely with a lot of our, uh, programs at KSDE, which has been really exciting, working with our Child Nutrition and Wellness Team, who is supporting early learning and, uh, kindergarten readiness, uh, work that we've been doing. We have early learning webinars monthly. And we invite some of our partners within the agency to come and share information for our schools to be aware of, what can they do and use for, from child nutrition and wellness. Teacher licensure and accreditation sets on, um, our team with us. We also have folks from Career Standards and Assessments. Um, our Communication and Recognition Team helps us with our PowerPoints and presentations. Right, Denise? Um, we have School Finance and Fiscal Audit Team meeting with us monthly to make sure that we get the correct information out to the field about our preschool and early learning programs, what the, when districts call and ask questions about that. So making sure that we're giving them correct information no matter which door they open or which phone call they make. Um, of course, information technology. And then we've been working really closely with our kids' data team to help us identify the kids that are being served in our districts.
And Janet Waugh has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess you're kind of, are you kind of through?
Yes.
Okay, I was just going to ask you a question. Uh, uh, last, we were informed that the legislature is forming a committee on early childhood. Are you guys working with them at all? Are you familiar with this?
I have not been, um, I-
Senator Petty.
I have heard that, but, uh, at this point in time, they would probably be talking to Dr. Watson about information and gathering it for us to share. But I have not been provided with that.
Guys wondered if they'd ask you for any information on-
I would like them to.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't, I'm not aware of that at this point. It may have just, I've heard just recently it got started, so.
Thank you.
But yes, thank you.
Perhaps Janet can expedite.
Yes.
I am very good friends with Senator Petty. And so-
Perfect.
I asked her last, when we, I found this out, to send me some information and, uh, okay, that's enough. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for your questions. So.
Since she has not quite reached her limit, we're going to let Kathy ask it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know the Ages and Stages is a kindergarten readiness. So it's taken before. So are there, during kindergarten, because sometimes I see assessments that are given that seem more, uh, maybe don't seem age-appropriate. Are there age-appropriate? Are you working, because I see you talk here that you're working with the, um, assessment groups. Or are you working with or thinking about in the future, anyway, of looking at some things that would be an age-appropriate follow-up to the Ages and Stages to see how kids are progressing? So that we're not, you know, one of my concerns since the time I've been on the board is that I think sometimes we test kids too much. And maybe the testing we use is not appropriate developmentally. So is that something you guys have got thought about for future work? After you get this implemented? I know I'm pushing you a little bit.
Yeah, well, it's a great question. I think that, um, we, we are trying to align so that we can see, you know, good outcomes by third grade when they actually do do that. There are lots of progress monitoring tools, as you mentioned, and assessment that schools use. It's typically a local decision on what those are. We, um, do put some parameters around, like we'd like it to be evidence-based. We like it to be, you know, do a needs assessment so you can identify what your, your needs are before you make decisions. Um, so we do give them some outline on our expectations, but it is a local decision on what the schools use. And aligning that from- use. And aligning that from, you know, pre-K to elementary on up is really important to sure that they're not, you know, to sure that they're collecting that data. And I think there is data collection, as you mentioned, everywhere and all, on all grades and levels. And we, as a state, give them some guidance and parameters around things, but I don't think that we actually, there are a few assessments that are required, but most of them are locally determined. Please do.
We do have an initiative we've been working on and started, I think, at our, at the assessment pre-conference, just on assessment literacy. You know, why would you give maps? Why would you give dibbles? And, you know, what was it intended to measure and, most importantly, not to measure? Because I think a lot of people will give a test and make inferences that it wasn't designed. So, just a lot of work on just good assessment literacy, not only academic. You know, we, you may be assessing five different ways whether or not a kid understands reading or math or, you know, literacy, but but you're never measuring whether or not they're socially, emotionally. So, we do have a big initiative going on around the state, just helping people understand when, why, how, and what appropriate assessment is to not only get back the over-assessing, but really understanding why you would, why and what you'd want to assess to begin with.
Thank you, Pratt. Thank you.
Janet, Janet's further away from her.
I haven't met my max.
She has several.
I had thought of this earlier, but I didn't want to interrupt you while you were doing everything. When you give this assessment for kindergarteners entering kindergarten, my question is, well, I just want to back up. My daughter decided to hold her son back a year for kindergarten. He went to early childhood programs. He was very, he had a lot of good background. However, he was premature. And she felt he simply, he was born in July and wasn't really ready. She felt it would be better. And frankly, it's served him well. He's a senior this year and has done much better, I believe. Will there ever be a time or how will you handle the child that will come and take this test? And they're really not ready, you know, for kindergarten. Will you recommend to the parent, well, maybe they need a little bit more training, or will you go ahead unless, I mean, because sometimes the parents don't even, aren't even aware of things like this. So, how will you handle that type of situation? I mean, I understand if the parents know they're coming, because I know of parents that have done that.
Yes.
You know, but what about the parent who really doesn't know?
Good question. I think someone mentioned that earlier, and I I do think it is a parent decision. We are not going to, we just want our teachers to be able to say that they they will be ready as teachers to help support those kids when they show up, whatever, you know, whatever the background and information is on that child, we want the teachers to be ready. And so, if the child's not ready and the parent says no, that's the parent's choice. We're not going to say no. And as teachers, we're not going to talk parents into one way or the other. We're going to allow them to make that choice.
Okay, but would you tell the parent, will they really are quite a bit behind at this point, or?
There would be some, several different things that you could do. One of them is that if there is some areas in the screening that they have done, that they say, you know, it looks like they're struggling in some of those areas, that each district has a sit team, and I, don't ask me what that stands for, but it's Student Improvement Team, and some of them call them SAT teams, and you know what that one is?
The Assistance.
Thank you, Student Assistant Team. So, they can refer the, those children to those teams to do further in-depth. At this point in time, kindergarten readiness has happened at enrollment. So, there, the data is collected then. But if they have data from their physician or other early learning programs prior to ever enrolling in school that they have questions about, they can certainly, there are other avenues for them to reach out to, including special education, if that's appropriate. So, we're just saying, don't, a lot of times when they're held out, what happens is they don't, not always, but what happens many times is they don't send them anywhere. And so, when we say, you know, they're not ready, then we might be setting them up even further for failure, because then they don't, well, there's not really anything for us to, they're not ready yet, but we'll just keep them home another year and, you know, cross our fingers. That that doesn't work either. So, we want to make sure that there's resources for those families, that if they choose to do that, what else are they going to be able to do? So, pre-K at risk may be one of those options also.
Thank you.
So, yes, you're welcome.
So, what's next?
What's next is, I was given clear directions by Chairman Porter that tomorrow we need to be having all kids ready for kindergarten, correct?
I did indicate that we're not very patient.
Yeah, tomorrow.
You know, what are we going to do with this information? I mean, I know what we're going to do, but we're going to help parents. But, and and we don't want to collect data so that we can rank schools. We we don't want.
Absolutely.
This X school, they're ready, and Y school, they're not. You know, we, that 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 doesn't help anybody.
Right.
If we do that, I hope that we can do that to provide, help those districts where many school, children maybe are not coming, to identify that and so we, so they, help them provide resources.
Absolutely. Yes, that that is the end goal, is to find out what, we may be able to identify communities that are struggling because they have no funding available to them for. Or I've had several schools say, we know there's an increase in pre-K. We've never done it before. How do we get started for pre-K at risk? Those might be appropriate resources that are now going to be put in place possibly for our pre-K students before they ever get to kindergarten. So, that'll help them for kindergarten readiness, as well as the collaboration, I believe, with our state agency partners for early, we have a monthly meeting with our Early Childhood State Agency leaders, where we talk to them about workforce development, teacher readiness, what's on the, you know, what's coming, what grants are coming out, what support do the other early learning teams need? And as a collection of early learning professionals, how do we support all of early learning? Because if we know that there's no Parents as Teachers program, early Head Start, Head Start, the only true across-the-board early learning programs that are available at every school district is special education. Prior to that, there may or may not be anything. And so, building up our Parents as Teachers programs, building up other resources in those communities, not necessarily district-funded, but community-supported, are are really our long-term goal is to get, how do we get to that?
Do we have any hard data on the success of things like Parents as Teachers or Head Start or?
Yes, we do. We have a collection of the evidence-based information around. Head Start is extremely forward-thinking and has been going for over, I don't even know, 20-plus years, 30 maybe years. Oh, my gosh, 50, almost 50, I, okay, I forget how old I am. My my sisters went to Head Start. One of my, my parents took in foster children, and we had kids in our family that went to Head Start, so 40-plus years ago, that they've been going strong, and they have a lot of things.
Forward-thinking parents, right?
That's right. And they, we use a lot of the resources that they have created to help support some of the evidence base that's going on with early learning. So, yes.
Little disclosure, Tiffany's father was my son's basketball coach, Jim.
That's right.
Jim.
The other Jim.
I thought that was Jim was the name of the guy, the coach. No, that was Tom. You need punctuation in there. Well, thank you very much for your report. One of the, one of the exciting things as a parent, as a new parent, is, you know, they get all these numbers, you know, and I I think both in my own life as a child and all later on as a parent, we've got, you know, marks on the door or some wall or something about their height. And my kid's got 90% above the average on height. They're three. They're not going to be in the NBA. You know, regrettably, as public schools historically have just opened the door and waited for who showed up. You know, it was like, come on in. It might have a roundup or something, you know, but basically it was, you know, come on in. And and we weren't really concerned about where they were. We just figured everybody was at the same spot. And we know today that with brain development and emotional, social, and so many other things, that all kids don't come to the starting line in August of their kindergarten year at the same time, the same place, in an equal fashion. And this effort that we're doing right here is a start of a conversation statewide with professionals, thank you, and 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 new parents and parents, and giving them the opportunity now to calibrate or at least have some calibration, measurements or 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 starting line. We've we've kind of established, you know, as as, and you mentioned, you know, hand-eye coordination, you know, retrieving, catching a ball. It's not that we want them to all be ball players. It has, in terms of brain development, we know that eye-hand coordination is an indicator of of some issues, you know. Not that there can't be a center fielder on their team later, but in terms of reading, we know the relationship between the eye and and reading. So, this is a great start. What we have to realize is, I'd I'd be anxious to come back here in 10 years and see what we're really doing. Some of it can be concerning because collecting data on students is always concerning for us, you know, but others is, you know, we're kind of started down the road. I don't want to be, you know, too futuristic, but to reevaluate what it means to be kindergarten-ready, because this isn't really about kindergarten-ready. This is really about, are you ready? You know, some kids get a great deal of of support, almost to the point of they're sick of school by the time they get to us. You know, and we can't forget the play side, because that is great in brain development. But my point is, is this is a start of a whole new way of thinking about how we bring students into the educational system that will enhance the opportunities they have when they exit the, the system.
Yes.
You know, so I'm really encouraged because as we go to all-day kindergarten, as we start this kindergarten readiness, all of a sudden, hey, all four-year-olds are going to get this, you know. And and we've recognized that not, it's not just public institutions that provide these resources, opportunities, and supports, but church-based and community-based and other, you know, health-based programs that are there. So, this is really exciting. We're at the start of a change of how we begin the school experience. And it's great to be here. This has been talked about for over 150 years. Could we have all-day kindergarten? Simultaneously, we do all-day kindergarten, and we rethink how kids come to the starting line for their school experience. So, that's really cool. This is great, you know.
Thank you so much for saying all of that. That just gets me, I'm so inspired by this too. As I, you may have not heard me say this before, I worked at KSD before in the Early Childhood Special Education Program. And when, and I left for a brief amount of time and then realized how much I missed it. So, but when I looked at, to see the job description and what was going on with Kansas Can and all the the outcomes you guys created, I was like, social, emotional, and kindergarten readiness, you you hooked me. And I was back at Colleen's door asking for a job. So, I am excited about all the initiative and thoughts that you guys have put into this, because both of those two things, I think, are key to anything that we do with our kids. You have to, if your kid, if your kid comes and they can't sit still, and they're having trauma at home, and they can't even think about what's going to happen at school, you know, because they're thinking about what's happening at home, we're we're not helping them. And so, the social-emotional component and that bridging the parent engagement as part of this with all of those things is is key. So.
As a high school principal, I used to say, if you really want to fix high school graduation, go work with the kindergarten people, you know.
Exactly.
All we can do is spend a lot of money at the end of their experience, trying to rescue them, rather than spending additional funding and and purposeful funding at the beginning of their journey. It's it's much more efficient, and it's better for all of us. So, to the board and to the commissioner and to you guys that are leading it in the field, thank you. This is great. I'm really excited about this. I would come back in 13 years and see what the next graduating class in 13 years from now is going to look like. So, that's.
Yes, I agree. Thank you so much for saying that. Thank you for charging us ahead in this area, because this is very exciting.
Thank you. I want to go back to where you said you went out to nine different sites. How much was in Western Kansas? Where were they?
They were at, okay, this is going to be a test, Julie. You got to help me. Garden City.
Hutchison.
Hutchison.
Hutchison's not Western Kansas.
Oakley.
Okay.
Sablet.
Okay.
There's four.
Where's Northwest?
Hayes, Salina. I'm just trying to think of all the other ones. So, there are six of them.
So, you went to Oakley, you went to Hayes, Garden City, and Sablet.
I believe those are the four. Is that?
And Hut, well, Hut, I guess, isn't considered Western.
Yeah. That's in Ken's territory.
Okay.
Well, I'm very pleased with what, where all they went. You gave everybody a good chance. Thank you very much.
We felt like we did give, and and those were some of the service centers are that they're typically going to for supports. So, we went to where they typically go. So.
Well, thank you. You did a good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's nice to hear that sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My kids were early readers, very early. And they were labeled gifted. Actually, they were labeled exceptionally gifted. My daughter's like me. She's not profoundly off the charts. She has to work at things. That's how I am. But our our son was just off the charts. And he was reading beyond a high school level when he was seven, in second grade. So, that's part of my experience. The folks who tested him for his giftedness, one of the PhDs in psychology, her last name was Campbell, Liz Campbell, she said that there's a metaphor to keep in mind, that there's a reading gene, for want of a better phrase, a reading gene that's developed or evolved as we've built civilization.
Gene, I thought you said genie.
Gene.
Okay, got it.
And it kicks in at different levels or different ages. Different ages for different children. Okay, for my children, it kicked in pretty early. And part of it is no doubt because their mama read to them every night at bedtime. I mean, huge thing, right? But for some kids, for any one of 1,000 different factors, it kicks in later, age six or age seven, or even sometimes not until age eight. This is Liz Campbell, who tested my kids for giftedness, explaining this to me. And so, I think one of the dangers we have is saying, okay, at age four, they should be here. To pick up on what my colleague from Wichita, Mr. McNeese, was saying, we're not trying to say five-year-olds need to be here. We're trying to see where is that particular five-year-old, and how can we help that particular five-year-old? And not, hey, you need, we need to force-feed some stuff here, because you're not, you're not reading at the level that we say, you know, or what the charts say. We have to take a big step away from that. And that's my concern with all of this. I mean, my previous comment was probably a little harsh, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. We've all heard that. And I'm not trying to be accusatory at all, not at all. I think the work that you're doing is exemplary. But I think there are cautionary tales within anything we do in education. And here's one of them. Some kids aren't going to read until they're eight. It's more common in boys than it is in girls. But that reading gene for some boys doesn't kick in until they're eight, and they're perfectly healthy boys. Now, you get much beyond eight, and we probably have some issues, organic, brain wiring, all those things that, you know, the whole litany, that that would require experts beyond my expertise to unravel the mysteries. So, you know, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. I'm just trying to report what I know. And what I know is, we've got a whole world out there of of varied, different kids, and some of them who don't get support at home need, the parents need more support than the kids quite often. And and on your graphic, and this is how I look at it, this graphic with the atom of lithium or whatever it is, three electrons, I would put educational environment very small, and I would keep these other things very big, community, family, and child, huge. Educational environment? That's the small part, in my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. And I I do agree, agree with you on many of the things that you said, specifically that every child is at a different place. And the personalized learning that we have are now are, you know, leading the way, some of it may be at a later stage, but really personalized learning for these kids is really about where they're at and what we need to provide to them. So, I I totally agree with that. The only thing I would say, but and I get, I get your point, I do think community, family, and child are the most key pieces. Educational environment, if you think about it, also could be the home of the family, and it may have home visitors coming in to support the families, would be the only thing that I would say. I get that education should not be as, like, school is not above the child and the family by any means, but it is a partner with all of us. So, you're welcome. by any means, but it is a partner with all of us, so you're welcome.
If I remember correctly, I believe it was during the first Bush administration, there was established educational goals. One of those goals was children come to school ready to learn. That's been a whole bunch of years ago, and now we're talking about kindergarten readiness, which I think kids coming to school ready to learn is probably kindergarten readiness. It was a good slogan, it was a good list, we've all put it up on the wall. Everybody graduating from high school was one of them, too, but it didn't move the, it didn't move the needle. Well, I hope what we're doing now is, you know, we're going to use this information in order for us to move the needle, and so I, you know, I, what I'm seeing now is we're putting legs under that goal, and we're actually doing something, and I appreciate that. But as I told you before we started, I'm very patient, and I don't think anybody at this table is very patient, because, you know, we are dedicated, and people get tired of hearing me say this, we're dedicated to our, to our vision that Kansas leads the world and the success of each student, and that means those that are coming to school, and so anything that we can do to expedite their, their success, we want to do. We thank you very much for being here. I say no further questions. We thank you much for being here, for my colleagues. We'll take a 15-minute break. We will come back, and we'll still be early, so whenever we get back, we're going to start where we ended yesterday until time for the training, and then we'll, we won't, we might ask them to come early, and then if we don't get through with that part of the agenda, we'll do that at the end. Okay, 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll come back to order, please. At this point, I'm going to recognize Ruth Glover, who is with the Kansas Human Rights Commission. I think she's the boss of the Kansas Human Rights Commission. As, as we have discussed, I believe it's important for us to recognize that inappropriate behavior is, in fact, something that is happening in the workplace, and we need to set the example to make sure that we're aware and are very encouraging of people to conduct themselves in a manner that values everyone. Thank you so much for being here, and we're ready for you to take it, take it away.
And I was sharing with Peggy this morning that I am a second child, so I'm not used to hearing my own voice, you know. But I appreciate Chair Porter and Peggy and Wendy Fritz asking us to come and make a presentation. As you can imagine, I have spent a lot of time reading about harassment training and what makes it effective, and one thing that has been consistent in everything that I have read is that it starts at the top, and in order for any type of harassment training to be effective and to have a buy-in by employees in the workplace, it requires the support of the leadership and the initiative of the leadership. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you today. This is our Inappropriate Behavior in the Inclusive Workplace Presentation. Basically, this is our harassment presentation. What we're going to do is we're going to touch on what an inclusive workplace is, we're going to touch on civil rights laws, specifically civil rights laws that prohibit discrimination, harassment, and sexual harassment, and also, we're going to talk about other inappropriate behavior. It may not rise to the level of harassment, but it still doesn't belong in the workplace. And I always encourage questions. Sometimes we have, I have stories to tell, so feel free to ask any questions that you might have. So let's take a look at what an inclusive workplace is. It's one that welcomes all individuals, treats them with dignity, and respects their differences. Now, it doesn't say anything at all about liking your coworkers, doesn't say that you have to like your boss, and for the supervisors that we have, it doesn't say that you have to like the people that you supervise, but it is important that everyone in the workplace be treated with dignity and respect. It doesn't say that you have to agree with each other's religious opinions, political beliefs, lifestyle choices, but it's important that everyone be treated in a professional manner. So why is inclusiveness important? Well, first of all, two heads are better than one. I know in our organization, we just have, we're just a small agency, and we have several employees who have been there 20 years or more, but I have discovered that whenever we have something new that comes up, or a new question, or a new policy or procedure that we need to implement, that if we have more people involved, more ideas at the table, we're going to have a better product, a more inclusive product than if it was just one person working on that question. They're going to have maybe different skills, different expertise, maybe different institutional knowledge than what I would have, and so if we have more people involved in the process, we're going to have a better product to either offer our employees or to the people that we serve. It's also important for organizations to reflect their customer base and reflect their community. It's been shown that organizations that reflect their customer base are more economically profitable than those that don't. So if you have an organization whose employees are like the customers that they serve, they can better anticipate what their customers want and need. And, you know, I know we're not about making money, but we all get judged on how effectively and efficiently we provide our services, so it's important that we be able to meet our customers' needs. Also, it's important to maintain a good reputation in the community. If someone feels like they've been mistreated at work, do they keep it to themselves? No, they go home, they tell their spouse, their family, their friends, and if that happens over and over again, then pretty soon that organization has a bad reputation in the community. Also, it's important for some organizations to be a good partner in society. Sometimes when you look at organizations' websites, you'll see that they have embraced diversity or have adopted equal opportunity, and lastly, discrimination and harassment are against the law. So what are the consequences if someone feels like they've been mistreated at work, if they've been harassed or discriminated? Well, first of all, they can file complaints internally with their own organization. They can also file complaints with us, the Kansas Human Rights Commission. They can also file complaints with our federal partner, the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Just to see how active the EOC was, I checked their website, and this was in November, and they had either sued or settled with 14 different employers. The lowest amount was $45,000, but the highest amount was $9.8 million. Even that lowest amount of $45,000 is a lot of money coming out of an organization, all because someone felt like they weren't treated in an appropriate manner in the workplace. Also, individuals can file civil lawsuits. So if an individual files a complaint either with us or with the EOC, even if we don't find evidence to support their allegations, they can still proceed and file a civil lawsuit on their own. And then depending upon what the behavior is, criminal charges might be appropriate in some cases, and lastly, there's public embarrassment. Everybody know about Matt Lauer and how he doesn't have a job now? Everybody heard about Harvey Weinstein? I never even heard of him until a few months ago, and now he's been, yes, and now he's been kicked out of the company that he helped, that he founded and owned. Probably one of the cases that first caught my attention was the case of Gretchen Carlson with Fox News. Anybody remember Gretchen Carlson from Fox News? She resigned from Fox News, and then there were rumors that she had resigned because of alleged sexual harassment by Roger Ailes, who was the head of Fox News. And then a couple months after Gretchen Carlson left, Fox News came out and publicly apologized to Gretchen Carlson because of the bad, the bad environment that she had worked in, and Gretchen, Fox News paid her $20 million, and then Roger Ailes ended up resigning. So Fox News was making news, not because of any type of news reporting or political analysis, they were in the headlines because of the bad behavior that was incurred in their workplace. So let's talk about civil rights laws. What is a civil right? It's generally created and protected by a government body, either a federal government or a state government, so that means that there are laws that prohibit discrimination and harassment. Now, there are also some cities in Kansas that have ordinances prohibiting discrimination and harassment also. Now, when the laws were first passed, they most commonly involve the protection against discrimination based on race, religion, gender, and national origin, but as time has passed, those laws have been expanded, and now they prohibit discrimination, harassment based on age, disability, genetic discrimination, and also retaliation. So let's take a look at some common federal statutes. The first is Civil Rights Act of 1964. Now, this is most common to our Kansas Act Against Discrimination, so we'll keep going over this as we progress throughout the presentation. The Age Discrimination Employment Act, that was passed in 1967, and that prohibits discrimination against applicants or employees who are 40 and over. The Pregnancy Discrimination Act, that was passed in 1964, and that prohibits discrimination and harassment of individuals who are currently pregnant, who have been pregnant in the past, or could become pregnant in the future. Now, the Equal Pay Act was passed in 1963, and that works to ensure that men and women who work for the same organization receive the same rate of pay. Now, is anybody familiar with the U.S. Women's Soccer Team? Okay, they filed, apparently they have filed a complaint with U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission alleging that they were paid less than the U.S. Women's Soccer Team. There was a segment on 60 Minutes a few months ago, I see some nodding of heads, and one of the examples they used was Hope Solo, who's the goalie for the U.S. Women's Soccer Team, and they reported that she earned $364,000 per year, but in order to earn that money, she had to appear in 20 through games, whereas the U.S. Men's goalie, he earned $399,000 per year, but only had to appear in eight games. So if you distilled it down to the barest, barest essentials, the man was doing one-third of the work and getting paid a whole lot more than what the woman was. There were also allegations like the men get to fly first class, the women had to fly coach, the men got to have the practice field to themselves, the women had to share the practice field, and I think they have all resolved that. I think the women signed a new compensation deal in April of last year, and so that resolved that complaint. The Americans with Disabilities Act, that was passed in 1990 and updated in 2008. The Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act was passed in 2008. Now, this law makes it illegal for an employer to inquire about employee's family health history, or require them to divulge it, or to purchase that information from a third party. Now, all of us in our family trees, we may have some type of illness that may be genetic in nature, you know, you think of Alzheimer's or Parkinson's, maybe some cancers, maybe diabetes, that may run in our family trees, but just because it's in our family tree doesn't mean that we're ever going to actually develop that illness or injury or disability. So just because, so our employer should be judging us on our work performance today, not what our health conditions may be 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road. Make sense? Okay. So as issues have become important in society, then laws have been passed to reflect that. This is our Kansas Act, the Kansas Act Against Discrimination. It was passed in 1953, so that was 11 years before the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Kansas was the 12th state to have an anti-discrimination law, so really, Kansas has been a leader in the civil rights field. Now, the Kansas Human Rights Commission is a neutral investigative agency, so we're not on the side of the people who file the complaints with us, and we're not on the side of the people, the employers who receive the complaints either. Now, we carry out our mission through a two-pronged approach. First of all, we receive complaints of discrimination, we investigate them, and we work to resolve them. The second is that we do public outreach in the hopes that if people can learn what discrimination and harassment are, then it won't occur in the future. So the Kansas Act Against Discrimination prohibits discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations, so that means that we protect people where they work, where they live, and where they consume goods and services that are offered to the public. Now, a lot of times when people think about discrimination laws or harassment laws, they think that it only protects certain minorities, or only protects, it only protects women, but really, the laws protect everybody. So for race, it protects everyone who has, you know, everyone has a race, so it protects everyone. For religion, it protects people who have a religion. It also protects people who don't have a religion or who are nonbelievers. Sometimes we also receive complaints regarding varying degrees of the same religion, so sometimes we'll get a complaint, say, where a more liberal Christian feels like they have been discriminated or harassed by a more conservative Christian, or vice versa. Color is the color of your skin. Most often, we'll receive these complaints from people of color, but color also includes skin tone. So if someone has some type of skin discoloration, say, rauacea, or maybe a port wine stain, they feel like they've been discriminated against or harassed because of that, they can file a complaint based on color. Now, national origin, usually we receive these complaints from people who have been born in other nations and have now come to live and work inside Kansas, but it also protects people who have been born in the, in the United States and feel like they have been discriminated, harassed by people from other countries. For example, we just sent a case to one of our commissioners last week. There was an employee, he says that most of his coworkers are Hispanic and originated from Mexico, and he feels like they have harassed him because he's not Mexican, that he's from the United States originally. Now, ancestry is your family heritage, so usually, these individuals have been born maybe outside the United States, or their, their families maybe have come from other countries, maybe from Asia or Europe or South America, Mexico, and, and, but they've been born here in the United States, but they feel like they've been discriminated or harassed because of that family background, that family heritage. Now, sex for us is gender, so that's male or female. Sex for us also includes pregnancy discrimination. Now, the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has interpreted sex to include sexual orientation and gender identity. So if someone contacts us and they feel like they've been discriminated against based on sexual orientation or gender identity, we'll go ahead and refer them on to the EOC. Disability actually has three parts to it. The first is that you, that you really do have a disability. The second is that you have a record of a disability. So a lot of times we'll see this where someone has had some type of workers' comp injury or had to take time off underneath the Family Medical Leave Act due to some type of illness or injury. So there are records, either paper records or electronic records showing that at one time you suffered from some type of illness or injury. Now, the third part is being regarded as being disabled, so you really don't have a disability, but others consider you as disabled or think of you as being disabled. So a lot of times we see this where someone has had some type of illness or injury in the past, maybe that workers' comp injury or taking time off underneath the Family Medical Leave Act, they've been released to work, they've recovered, but the employer never actually schedules them to come back to work, or maybe they have some type, or just returned to work part-time, or they received some type of disparaging remarks about their ability to complete their jobs once they returned to work. We also see this a lot where people have some type of illness or injury, it doesn't rise to the level of disability, but people still think of them as being disabled. Now, age is 40 and over, family status, that's really for housing, and that's when you have children or grandchildren under the age of 18 living with you. Genetic screening and testing, that's our equivalent to the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act. Now, retaliation, in our law, it says we're outwardly opposing for discrimination, so for us, that means that someone has complained of discrimination, maybe internally, or they filed a complaint of discrimination either with us or some other organization, they participated maybe as a witness in an investigation or a lawsuit involving discrimination or harassment, or they asked for an accommodation for their religious practice or for a disability so that they can perform their job.
Is there an upper limit?
No, there isn't. There used to be years ago, I think when the law was first passed for the state, there used to be an upper limit of 70, but there's not anymore. And a lot of times, we do receive complaints involving people who are maybe 69, 70, 75 years old, they're still continuing to work, but now they feel like they've been harassed or discriminated against in their workplace because they are those upper ages. Any other questions? As I was mentioning before, a lot of times, people think that the law only protects, you know, certain minorities or just women, but really, the law protects everyone. So for sex, you'll see that 168 women filed complaints with us, really 170, because there were two on pregnancy also. 170 women filed complaints with us because they felt like they were discriminated against or harassed because they're women, but we also had 60 men file complaints with us who felt like they were discriminated or harassed because they're men. Now, for race, we had 208 black people file complaints with us, but we also had 28 white people file complaints with us because they felt like they were discriminated or harassed because they're white. Now, for national origin, I thought it was interesting that Hispanic is the highest category, but you know, in a database, you can only have so many boxes that you can check. I thought it was interesting that for the second highest category is national origin, other, so we don't have enough boxes in our database to reflect all the nations where people have come from and now live and work in Kansas. It's also important for organizations to be aware of their own anti-harassment or anti-discrimination policies. Sometimes organizations will provide Sometimes organizations will provide additional protections above and beyond what's either in federal law or state law. So a lot of times with public employers, we'll see where they prohibit discrimination or harassment based on political party affiliation and sometimes military status. So what is discrimination? This is our rules and regs, and it's going to sound like rules and regs. Discrimination is any direct or indirect exclusion, segregation, denial, or any other differentiation in the treatment of a person on account of their protected class. So let's put this in plain language. Discrimination happens when an adverse action meets a protected class. So when someone calls us and wants to file a complaint with us, they have to say that whatever bad is happening, whatever negative is happening in their workplace is because of their protected class. Now, an adverse action can be anything negative in the workplace. It can be getting fired, getting laid off, being demoted, receiving a worse evaluation than your peers when you think you're doing the same type of work, the same level of work. Sometimes we get, we get a lot of complaints about increased scrutiny of work, that they feel like their work is scrutinized more closely or more critically than their peers, even though they're doing the same level of work. Now, an adverse action can also mean not receiving something positive in the workplace. So not getting hired, not getting promoted, not getting to go to the fun convention trip that everybody else goes to. But whenever someone calls us and wants to file a complaint with us, they have to say that it's because of one of the protected classes. So they were fired because of their race. They were laid off because of their religion. They weren't promoted because of their gender. So there always has to be that causal link between the adverse action and one or more of the protected classes. So there's two types of discrimination. The first is disparate treatment, and that's treating members of protected class in a different and less favorable manner than others because of their protected class. So in this example, we have a job opening, and it must be all internal applicants because we know all the applicants have preschool children. So we're willing to consider the men with preschool children, but we're not willing to consider the women with preschool children because we have this preconceived notion that women are going to take more time off to care for toddlers who get sick often. So the men and the women are in the same situation, same education, same working background. But we're willing to consider the men, but we're not willing to consider the women. Now, we had a case that was filed with us, and the allegations were that the supervisor, that there was disparate treatment of the women, that he treated the women worse than he treated the men in the work situation. So the allegations included that the supervisor would yell at the women and scream at the women and slam doors and swear at the women when they made mistakes, but he wouldn't do that with the men. He would treat the men in a professional manner. Now, allegations also include, included that there was increased scrutiny of the women, particularly that he was monitoring their break times and their lunchtimes to make sure that they returned on a timely basis, but he didn't do that with the men. And that the allegations went so far as that he would actually follow the women down the hall when they went to the restroom to make sure they were really going to the restroom. So we did an investigation, and we found out that those allegations were true. So we needed to determine whether or not there was some type of legitimate nondiscriminatory reason for the different treatment between the men and the women. And we discovered that there wasn't a legitimate nondiscriminatory reason for the difference in the treatment. The women weren't making more mistakes or worse mistakes than the men, and there was no abuse of the leave time or the break time by the women, and they weren't sneaking out the back door when they went to the restroom. So because the men and the women were in the same situation, and the women were being treated worse than the men, then we could find that disparate treatment had occurred. Make sense? Adverse impact. This is when you have a policy or a practice and you apply it to everybody in the workplace. So you think it treats everybody equally, but in reality, it has an adverse impact on one or more segments of society, one or more protected classes. So we're back to our job application again, and we have an English test when reading and writing is not considered an essential function of the job. So this might have an adverse impact on people who have English as a second language, so that would be the protected class of national origin. It also might have an adverse impact on people who have difficulty reading. So maybe someone who has dyslexia, so that would be disability. Also, it might have an adverse impact on someone who has difficulty taking tests, maybe somebody who has ADHD. So again, that would fall underneath the protected category of disability. So harassment, it's illegal to harass either an applicant or employee because of any of the protected classes, because of their race, because of their color, because of their sex, including pregnancy for us, sexual orientation, gender identity for the EEOC, because of their ancestry, their national origin, being the age of 40 and over, because of disability or genetic information. It's also illegal to harass someone because they've complained about discrimination either internally or they filed a complaint with us or the EEOC, or if they participate in an investigation or lawsuit involving discrimination or harassment, or if they've asked for an accommodation for religious practice or an accommodation for their disability so that they can perform their job. So let's take a look at how widespread harassment is. Actually, the EEOC, the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity, has included addressing harassment in part of their strategic plan for the last several years. They feel like it's an important workplace issue and an important issue to be addressed in society. Now, 2015, they had a hearing specifically to address harassment in the workplace. And they said that 30% of all charges filed with the EEOC alleged some type of workplace harassment. They also said that one in four women face harassment in the workplace. And I still read articles that say 50%, 60% of the women in the workplace face some type of harassment. And I read an article just the other day that said 85% of the women in the workplace face some type of harassment. And they also received testimony that said that individuals with disabilities are especially vulnerable to harassment. So let's take a look at Kansas. In fiscal year 2016, 28% of our employment complaints alleged some type of harassment. Now, in some years, it's been as high as 40% of our complaints alleged some type of harassment. These are the reasons that people have filed harassment complaints with us. So the number one reason for filing a harassment complaint with us was sex. So we had 101 women file sexual harassment complaints with us in fiscal year 2016. We had 17 men file sexual harassment complaints with us. But in a lot of years, we've had 40, 50 men file some type of sexual harassment complaints with us. The number two reason for filing a harassment complaint with us was disability harassment. Then it fell off to race, and then it fell off again to national origin and ancestry and age, and then it fell off again to color and religion. So the law does not prohibit simple teasing, offhand comments, or isolated incidents that aren't very serious. But harassment becomes illegal if it is so frequent or severe that it creates a hostile or offensive work environment or if it results in an adverse action, such as the victim being fired or demoted. Now, the standard that we use is a reasonable person standard, a reasonable person in the victim's shoes using common sense and socially accepted moral standards. So I'm sure we're all reasonable people, right? Yes, yes, we're all reasonable people. But are we all going to agree on any one thing? No, probably not. And so whenever someone is engaging in inappropriate behavior in the workplace, some type of bad behavior in the workplace, they're really kind of gambling whether or not their behavior is going to be judged by someone else down the road, and that person is going to say, "Well, it's bad behavior, but it's not harassment." Or someone else saying, "Well, it's crossed the threshold, and it is harassment now." So let's take a look at who a harasser can be. A harasser can basically be anybody who is in the workplace. And it can also be someone that is not employed by the organization, but that you encounter as you're carrying out your official duties. So the harasser can be a coworker. It can be your supervisor or supervisor in another area. Basically, anyone who is employed by the employer. Now, as I mentioned, we also have harassment when there are cases when someone is carrying out their official duties and they encounter someone who harasses them, and we call that third-party harassment. And that third party can be a client, a customer, or vendor, anyone that you encounter as you're carrying out your official duties. Kind of the classic example is a waitress who serves a customer, and the customer makes inappropriate comments or touches them inappropriately in the workplace. We also have had cases where there have been delivery people who have been making deliveries to an organization, and then that person who's receiving those deliveries has had to refuse maybe romantic overtures or refuse some type of inappropriate comments. And then those complaints have been filed with us, and we found probable cause because that person has been subjected to some type of third-party harassment. We also, a lot of times, employees have to carry out their official duties in other locations other than the workplace. If you think of the copy repair person, they have to go out to other locations to carry out their duties. And if they are subjected to harassment in those other locations, they can file a complaint internally or with us alleging some type of harassment. Harassment outside the workplace may also be illegal if there's a link to the workplace. So a lot of times, we receive complaints when people are traveling together, either to go to meetings or to conferences, or if they have to have some type of delivery route. Like, for example, we had a case not too long ago where there was a lady who drove one of those great big gravel trucks, and her supervisor, the owner of the company, would drive along with her. And then he would subject her to inappropriate conversations and based on sex. And she ended up filing a complaint with us, and we found probable cause that she had been subjected to sexual harassment. We also had a case not too long ago that was filed with us where there was an employee. She said that she and her supervisor were going to a conference, and they were sitting on the airplane. And the supervisor, I have to warn you that one of the other common denominators in harassment training that I've been reading about is that a lot of the examples are cringe-worthy. And I like to include examples because I think it helps other people understand, but some of them are cringe-worthy. We had a case that was filed with us that the employee said that she and her supervisor were going to go to a conference, and as they're sitting on the plane, allegedly, the supervisor turned to her and said, "You're leaving your spouse behind. I'm leaving my spouse behind. We can hook up at this conference. No one will know, but when we come back to Kansas, it's all over and we'll never speak of it." But she ended up filing a complaint with us. A lot of times, we also receive complaints involving like holiday parties or conferences. You know, people act differently when they're in a social setting, maybe more relaxed than when they're in a social setting. And so a lot of times, we receive complaints because people have made inappropriate conversations based on any of the protected classes, usually it's sexual harassment, or touched somebody inappropriately or kissed somebody in one of those social settings. And then pretty soon, we have a complaint filed with us or with the EEOC. Now, the victim can also be a bystander witnessing the harassing behavior by others. So we have this little group of people in the background, these purple and green and yellow people, and they're having some type of consensual conversation. It's all fun and games with them. Everyone's agreeable to that conversation. But anyone outside that group, if they can hear that conversation, they can file a complaint. So we had a case, it was a restaurant, and the kitchen staff and the waitstaff would make fun of the African-American customers. They were using the N-word, and they would make criticizing remarks about the African-American customers. Well, one of the coworkers was African-American, and he could overhear those conversations, and he could hear them using the N-word and making jokes at the expense of the African-American customers. He complained to the owner. Nothing happened. And so he ended up filing a complaint with us, and we found that he had been a victim of harassment. Even though he wasn't directly involved in those conversations, he could still see and observe that bad behavior, and therefore, we could consider him a victim. Now, sometimes we also receive complaints where people say that they are grieved on behalf of other employees in the organization. So for example, we just received a complaint where there is a man, he says that, he alleges that men in the organization make disparaging comments about women, about their skills and whether or not they should have been hired and whether or not they should be promoted. So they are making these broad disparaging comments about women in the workplace. So there is a man who says that he has heard these comments, and so now he says, he has filed a complaint with us saying he is aggrieved on behalf of the women in the workplace. So basically, he's sticking up for the women in the workplace. Make sense? Yes, that is. In our statute, it does provide for individuals to file on behalf of others, that they're aggrieved on behalf of others. So let's take a look at how we would evaluate a hostile work environment case. Well, first of all, it has to be related to employment. But like we said, it can occur outside the workplace, and it can occur in social settings outside the workplace as long as there's a link to the workplace. And usually, that link is that the people are coworkers together or supervisor, supervisee, something of that nature. We're also going to look at whether or not the conduct was unwelcome. And we're going to look at the impact on the alleged victim. How did the alleged victim view it? What was the impact on the alleged victim? Did they initiate any of the behavior or did they find it offensive? And we're going to disregard the alleged harasser's intent. So it doesn't matter if the alleged harasser says that they didn't mean anything by it or that they were just having fun or just joking. We're going to put all of that aside.[1513.60] We're also going to take a look at how severe is it? So, basically, how bad is it? Is it making comments? Is it sending emails? Is it sending text messages? Is it touching somebody? Is it touching somebody's private parts? Is it some type of forced kissing? Or even worse? We're going to also take a look at how pervasive it is. So, how often does it happen? Did it happen just once, or is it happening all the time? Is it happening several times a week, or several times a day? And the thing is, it doesn't have to be severe and pervasive. It can be severe or pervasive. So, if it's bad enough, it only has to happen once in order for us to find probable cause that harassment has occurred. Or if it's low-level incidents, but they're happening all the time, then we can also find probable cause that harassment has occurred. And it also has to be based on a prohibited nature, so based on somebody's race, based on somebody's color, based on somebody's religion, or national origin, or their gender, or their age. So, nicknames, comments, anything, based on any of those protected classes. And then, the last thing is that it creates an intimidating, hostile, abusive work environment. And again, we're using that reasonable person standard, a reasonable person in the victim's shoes, using common sense and socially-accepted moral standards. For sexual harassment, there's two types of sexual harassment. The first is the hostile work environment, and really, we just covered that. There's also quid pro quo, and this occurs when unwelcome sexual conduct is made as a condition of employment or employment decisions. So, in quid pro quo, occurs when someone who has power over another individual, you know, either a supervisor, a manager, an owner, someone who has power over either an applicant or an employee, subjects them to unwelcome sexual behavior, unwelcome sexual conduct, and that person feels like they have to tolerate that behavior in order to avoid something negative in the workplace, or in order to gain something positive in the workplace. So, as an example of avoiding something negative in the workplace, we had a case that was filed with us, and at the beginning of the Great Recession, you know, there were lots of companies laying off lots of individuals. So, there was a case where there was a company, and they were going through layoffs. It was well-known that they were going through layoffs, and they had three receptionists. So, you would think that they would lay off the newest receptionist, right, and keep on the most experienced receptionist, right? Well, that's not what happened. The owner of the company went to the newest receptionist and basically said, "If you engage in an affair with me, then I will lay off the other two receptionists, and I'll keep you on." Well, she needed her job, so she went ahead and accepted his advances, and he laid off the other two receptionists, and she got to keep her job. Well, she ended up filing a complaint with us, and we found that there was quid pro quo, that she felt like she had to tolerate those sexual advances in order to avoid the negative of being laid off. Now, as an example of gaining something positive in the workplace, we had a case that was filed with us. There was a lady who had applied for a job, and she didn't get the first job, but the hiring manager got her cellphone number and started texting her, and basically promised her the next job that would come up if she would go out on dates with him. Well, she refused his advances and texted back that she wasn't interested. The hiring manager continued to pursue her, and she ended up filing a complaint with us, and she sent those text messages to us as evidence of this person's bad behavior. Well, of course, we notified the employer that a complaint had been filed. They did their own investigation, and they found their text messages, because of course, this guy sent the text messages on his work phone. And they ended up firing the hiring manager because they felt like he had engaged in quid pro quo sexual harassment, that this lady felt like she had to tolerate his advances in order to gain the positive of perhaps being hired for the next job. So, favoritism due to sexual favors. This occurs when one employee in the workplace is somehow favored over other employees because of a cooperative sexual relationship in the workplace. So, in this scenario, we have this couple that's in the background, and they're involved in some type of romantic relationship. But if one of those people in that romantic relationship is favored, you know, basically like a boss's pet or a supervisor's pet, then anyone outside that relationship can file a complaint. Sometimes, we do receive complaints involving this type of behavior, but I can remember only one case that we found probable cause that we felt that there was favoritism due to sexual favors. In this particular case, there was a small business, and the owner already had two women on staff, two employees on staff, and he hired, you know, a younger, prettier employee to come to work. Well, pretty soon, this owner and this newest employee were engaged in this flirtatious romantic relationship. When they discussed things, there was a lot of sexual innuendo, a lot of flirting, different things of that nature. And then, pretty soon, this newest employee was coming in late, taking longer lunch hours, but her pay and her time wasn't docked. Now, anybody else, if they had come in late, or had taken a longer lunch hour, they would have gotten their time docked, or their pay docked. And then, also, it was discovered that this newest employee got a bigger bonus than any of the other employees, even though she had been on less time and worked fewer hours than the other employees. So, there was that favoritism due to sexual favors in the workplace. So, basically, if there are some type of rewards in the workplace, they should be based on the work performance, not because somebody is the boss's pet or the supervisor's pet. Same-sex sexual harassment, this occurs when an individual is not considered to meet, is not considered by other individuals to meet the stereotype of this gender. So, women aren't considered to be feminine enough, and men aren't considered to be masculine enough. And this goes back to a case in, with US Supreme Court in 1989. There was a lady named Anne Hopkins, and she had applied to become a partner in the accounting firm that she worked for. Now, the partners of the accounting firm, there was no, there was no problem with her work, her work was fine, but the other partners in the accounting firm considered her to not be feminine enough. So, they said that she was foul-mouthed, and she was dominant, and that she was aggressive, and they told her that in order to be considered to be a partner, she needed to be more feminine. So, she needed to dress more feminine, she needed to have her hair styled, and wear makeup, and to wear jewelry. So, she was being judged not on whether or not she could do the job, but whether or not she met the stereotype of what a woman should be. Now, for the men, there was an EOC case, and it occurred in Louisiana. There was a construction company that was building bridges in Louisiana, and there was an employee named Carrie, and his boss didn't think that Carrie was man enough to be a rough construction worker. First of all, he thought Carrie should be a girl's name, so he teased Carrie about that. He also called Carrie Princess and other nicknames. And then Carrie was smaller statured, so he got teased because he was a smaller, a smaller guy. Well, this also morphed into same-sex sexual harassment because Carrie's boss would expose himself to Carrie, and worse. Now, Carrie complained to higher-ups at the company, nothing happened, so Carrie ended up filing a complaint with the EOC, and the EOC took the construction company to court. And then Carrie ended up being paid $125,000, all because someone didn't treat him in the appropriate manner in the workplace. So, these are tools of harassment, some, evidence of harassment, some people might call them tools of harassment. We get a lot of complaints involving jokes, slurs, graffiti, offensive derogatory comments based on any of the protected classes. So, comments, nicknames, based on somebody's race, based on somebody's gender, based on somebody's religion, based on somebody's ancestry. We also get a lot of complaints about physical conduct in the workplace. I remember one of the very first cases that I ever read was about blocking movement. There was a restaurant, they would hire lots of young teenage waitresses, and the teenage waitresses would have to go into the freezer, the walk-in freezer, to get out things. And so, there was a cook who would come and stand in the door of the freezer, and so these young teenage waitresses would have to rub up against him in order to get out of the freezer. We also get a lot of complaints about touching in the workplace, you know, pats on the behind, neck rubs, shoulder rubs, things like that. We also get a lot of complaints involving huggers. Now, whenever we get a complaint about a hugger, the employer always writes back and says, "The hugger doesn't mean anything by it. They're this warm, affectionate person." But really, it has crossed the line for that person who is receiving the hugs. There was a case that I read about not too long ago, and I can't remember whether it's in North Carolina or South Carolina, but there's a deputy sheriff, and she had filed a sexual harassment complaint, and one of the, one of the items that she was complaining about was that she had been hugged by the sheriff eight times over a two-year period. Now, one court had said, "Well, that doesn't meet the threshold of sexual harassment," and they had dismissed it, but she had appealed it, and a higher court said, "Well, it's an issue that needs to be explored." And we've all had hugs, you know, maybe they're too long, or they're too frequent, or maybe when someone is being hugged, they get touched in other parts of the body. So, if you are a hugger, you have to be very careful that the person that you're hugging is actually welcome to those hugs, and they're okay with receiving those hugs. But if you really want to be on the safe side, then you shouldn't be hugging in the workplace. Any type of teasing based on any of the protected classes, teasing's based on somebody's religion, somebody's race, somebody's gender, should not occur in the workplace. Any type of spreading rumors or telling tales of a sexual nature should not occur in the workplace. We get a lot of complaints where people feel like they have been exposed to someone bragging about their sexual exploits, or telling tales about their sexual conquests. Also, non-verbal behaviors, anything staring, looking people up and down, any type of suggestive look should not occur in the workplace. It used to be, we would get complaints about like posters, or pin-up calendars, things like that, but most of the complaints we receive now involve some type of in-person contact, or some type of electronic communication. So, complaints involve like screensavers, emails, text messages, instant messaging through social media, anything of that nature. We had a case where there was a lady, she alleged that her supervisor had pornographic screensavers. So, as part of her complaint, as part of her documentation, she had taken a picture of her boss's computer. There is his computer, and there's his nameplate, and there's a pornographic screensaver. I talked to a lady not too long ago, and she had filed a complaint with us, and she says that her employer had called and left disparaging remarks about her disability on her voicemail. So, I told her that she needed to preserve those voicemails, and she needed to send those to her investigator. We get a lot of complaints about text messages. We had a case not too long ago where there was a lady, she said that her boss had asked for her personal cellphone, so she gave him the phone number, and then she is, he is sending her inappropriate text messages, asking her like what kind of underwear she likes to wear, and things of that nature. Sometimes, we do get complaints involving pictures. We had a case not too long ago where there was a man, he felt like he was being sexually harassed in the workplace, and he said that there was a woman coworker who would take semi-nude pictures of herself with her cellphone. She would bring her cellphone to work, and then pass her cellphone around to her coworker sharing those pictures. Sometimes, we get complaints involving videos of an inappropriate nature also. We also sometimes receive complaints in social media, particularly with instant messaging in social media. You know how on Facebook and other social media, you can send an instant message to someone, and just that person on the other end receives that message and can view that message, and it's really not open to the public? We had a case where there was a lady, she had gone to work for an organization, she started dating the boss, and she says that she didn't realize that the boss was married. And so, once she figured out that he was married, she wanted to put an end to that relationship. Well, the owner of the company continued to pursue her, and one of the ways he continued to pursue her was through instant messaging. He would ask her to continue that relationship, and then he would also send her instant messages that were sexual in nature or romantic in nature. And so, when she ended up filing her complaint, she also printed out like 20, 30 pages of these instant messages, and sent those along with the complaint when she filed it. So, there's really two things to that story. First of all, if there is a type of romantic relationship in the workplace, and it ends, then it needs, then it just needs to end. It should not be, continue to be pursued in the workplace. And secondly, any behavior that might have been welcome at one time can become unwelcome at any point in time. So, just because someone has been accepting of some type of behavior in the past, doesn't mean that they're going to continue to welcome that behavior in the future. So, really, that inappropriate behavior should never occur in the workplace to begin with. Any questions? So, what to do if you're harassed? The most important step is to tell the person to stop. That is the best way to demonstrate that the behavior that you're being exposed to is unwelcome. But we can also take into consideration if people don't always have the gumption to tell the alleged harasser to stop. Not everybody is going to have that ability to tell someone to stop bad, the bad behavior. And a lot of times, when we ask the people who have filed complaints with us, "Did you tell the alleged harasser to stop?" They'll say, "Well, yes, they did tell the alleged harasser to stop, but the harassment actually got worse, the bad behavior actually got worse," and we can take that into account. However, however, it is important for employees or applicants to tell management of the bad behavior, and to follow your organization's policies and procedures for reporting any type of harassment or discrimination. And the reason is that the employer needs to be given an opportunity to address any bad behavior in the, in the workplace. They need to be able to investigate that incident and take any corrective action. In certain cases, not in all cases, but in certain cases, we can't hold the employer responsible for that bad behavior unless they knew about the bad behavior and had the opportunity to correct it. Also, it's important to keep records of any type of bad behavior or harassment. A lot of times, when people file complaints, we'll ask them, "Well, did you keep those text messages? Or did you keep the notes that were left on your desk, or the notes that were taped to your locker, or inappropriate emails?" And they say, "Well, they got rid of them," you know, and, and, you know, I can understand that, because they're hurtful and they're offensive, but there also needs to be evidence to support your, whether or not you need to support that allegation internally with your own organization, or whether or not you end up filing a complaint. And also, it's a good idea to be aware of your own work environment, because a lot of times, we find that an alleged harasser doesn't have just one victim in the workplace. They may have many in the workplace. So, it's a good idea to be aware of who else in the workplace might also be a victim of the alleged harassment, or who might have left the workplace, because it's been shown that most people will not actually address the harassment in the workplace. Their way of dealing with the harassment is to get a job themselves and to leave the workplace. So, that's a hidden cost of harassment to the organization, is that people who have skills, and may be beneficial to the organization, would rather leave the workplace than to face harassment in the workplace, to take some type of corrective action. So, also, you consider filing a complaint, either with the Kansas Human Rights Commission, or with US Equal Law Opportunity Commission, if your own organization does not resolve the situation. And it's also been important, and this is something new, yes? Yes, well, actually, that, with a coworker, with a, well, the employer needs to demonstrate reasonable care. And by reasonable care, we mean that they need to have a policy that encourages employees to come forward with any type of harassment complaints, and that they need to be able to investigate those quickly and resolve those quickly, and then to also take any type of corrective action. So, if it's a coworker that is doing the harassment, probably only to be successful as a probable cause standard if the organization did not take steps to make sure that the employee had a way of filing complaints and addressing complaints. Now, if it's a supervisor who is doing the harassment, many times, the supervisor is considered to be an extension of, is a representative of the respondent of the employer. So, if the employer takes some type of harassing action, then many times, we can hold the organization responsible for that action. But I guess one, even if, even if we didn't find probable cause, a lot of times, when we receive complaints, organizations will ask for an extension before they file over their response, because they say that this is the first time that they have heard about the harassment, and then they initiate their own investigation. So, even if it wouldn't be probable cause by us, a positive byproduct would be that maybe it would raise the awareness of the organization, so that they take some type of action, and they examine their own policies and procedures to make sure that they are receptive to those types of complaints and address them adequately. Did I answer your question? Okay. This is something new that I've just added the last few months, and that is that if you are a bystander, and you see some type of harassing behavior, then you can also speak up and say something. You can report that to your management and follow your own policies for reporting some type of harassing behavior. And I think that this has maybe come from bullying efforts in schools, or anti-bullying efforts in schools, that many times, people who are the alleged victims are afraid to speak up, but maybe the people who are bystanders are not so, and so that maybe they're more willing to speak up and address the situation. Now, what to do if you're a supervisor? Now, a lot of times, we find that supervisors are the weakest link in this whole process, that supervisors have, are aware of the harassment or the bad behavior, and they haven't done anything to address it or report it, or they receive some type of complaint from an employee, but they don't do anything to either address the situation, or to pass it on to human resources, or to whoever the contact is. It's also important to have four supervisors to set an example. Sometimes, when we ask employees, "Well, did you complain to your supervisor?", they'll say, "Well, no, they're also engaging in bad behavior, so why are they going to do anything about my concern if they're already engaging in bad behavior themselves?" It's also important to know what your organization's anti-harassment policy and complaint process is. Now, I don't even know what our policy says word for word, but I sure know where to find it if I need it. Also, it's important to be aware of the tolerance for teasing or jokes based on any protected class. So, teasing based on somebody's age, jokes based on somebody's race, a nickname based on somebody's religion, even if the alleged victim doesn't seem to mind, because a lot of times in these situations, people go along to get along. You know, they find the behavior offensive, maybe they've complained to the harasser, their action actually gets worse, and so in the future, like I said, they just go along to get along, so that the harassment won't get worse. If you see some type, and also, just because you have a group of employees now who may view that behavior as, doesn't mean that in a month, or six months, or a year from now, you're either going to have a new employee, or a transfer, or maybe somebody's going to change their attitude, and then suddenly, that, that behavior is unwelcome to one or more people in the workplace. Also, if you see some type of harassing behavior in the act, put a stop. Also, have your listening ears on when someone complains, and be receptive to complaints. A lot of times, when people call us, they don't even use the word harassment. They're going to talk about toxic behavior, or explain why they don't want to work with a particular individual, or they're going to describe behavior, but they may not actually use the word harassment. If you have some type of concern, you may need to ask some clarifying questions about what is actually happening in the workplace, and whether or not it is an actual harassment complaint. So, if you do receive a complaint, or if you have a concern, it's important for you to go to your, your human resources, or your legal, you can develop a strategy on what needs to be done and how to address the problem. And then, lastly, don't retaliate against the alleged victim for complaining, or for witnesses for participating in an investigation. Now, a lot of times, we also see where maybe someone complains to a supervisor, but then they say, "Please don't say anything against this, please keep this to yourselves." But that's not appropriate. Once a supervisor receives some type of complaint, it's important for that supervisor to act on that, to address the complaint, you know, either by reporting it to HR, or legal, or whatever your organization's policies are. Once an employer learns about that complaint, even if someone says, "Please keep it confidential," you know, it still needs to be acted on. The responsibility is for the supervisor to protect the employee from that type of bad behavior. Let's take a look at a case study. This is race harassment. This is Jonathan Ritchie. Ritchie has seniority, Jonathan is African-American, and Ritchie is Caucasian. And Ritchie subjects Jonathan to a broad range of offensive behavior, racial slurs, there's the use of the N-word, there's inappropriate touching, I believe that there's a lot of shoving involved. And the incidents take place in work, but they also take place in social settings away from, but there's always that link to the workplace because they're coworkers together. The harassing behavior takes the form of in-person conduct, jokes, telephone conversations, voicemails, and lots of text messages. Ritchie says that he's joking around, and it's just banter. So, let's evaluate this. It's related to employment, it occurs in the workplace, but like we said, it also occurs in the workplace. occurs in social settings away from work, but there's always that link to the workplace because they're coworkers together. It's unwelcome, Jonathan views it as unwelcome, and he finds the behavior offensive, and he never initiates any of the behavior. It's always Ritchie initiates the behavior. But remember, we're only going to look at the impact on the alleged victim, we're going to disregard the alleged harasser's intent. It's also severe, it's bad, it's pervasive, it's happening all the time, every day, there are thousands of text messages. The use of the N-word makes it harassment, and then Ritchie's behavior is only directed at non-Caucasians. And I would think a reasonable person would say it creates an intimidating, hostile, abusive work environment. So this is the case of Jonathan Martin and Ritchie Incognita from the Miami Dolphins. Anybody remember that, when Jonathan Martin left the Miami Dolphins? At first, when it came out, it was in the sports pages, and it was really like a sports story, and we were kind of like, well, this sounds like this is a harassment complaint. And then a few months later, you actually did start reading articles addressing it as a harassment complaint. And the Miami Dolphins asked the NFL to investigate, and the NFL contacted a law firm to do the investigation. They wanted somebody who was outside the organization to do the investigation so that the findings, whatever they would be, would be accepted with credibility. And the report concluded that three starters on the Dolphins' offensive line engaged in a pattern of harassment against Jonathan Martin, another offensive lineman, and then an assistant trainer who was Asian. And the report cited racial slurs, racially derogatory language, and name-calling, and also the improper physical touching. And the report concluded that the harassment by Martin's teammates was a contributing factor in his decision to leave the team, although the teammates did not intend to drive him to the team. But remember, we disregard the alleged harasser's intent. It doesn't matter if they're just, say that they're having fun, or they didn't mean anything by it. We're going to look at the impact on the alleged victim. And then a couple months after the NFL's report, the law firm's report came out, the Miami Dolphins ended up... Sexual harassment. Bob's the head of the organization. Bob likes to ask subordinate women if they come to work without their panties. He demands kisses, and he tells women he likes to see the neck. We get complaints like this all the time. He also dragged one woman in a headlock while whispering in her ear, "It's Bob." Who wouldn't want to work with Bob? Yes.
Cringe-worthy?
Yes, yes, cringe-worthy. Let's evaluate this. It's related to employment, it occurs in the workplace. These employees and Bob also have to go out to other locations to carry out their official duties. It happens in those other locations also, but that's all related to employment. It's unwelcome, none of the women initiated the behavior, none of them wanted the behavior to occur. It's always Bob who initiates the behavior. It's severe, it's bad, it's pervasive. Not only is it happening with one woman in the workplace, it's happening with several women in the workplace. It's of a prohibited nature, it's sexual harassment, and I would think a reasonable person would say it creates an intimidating, hostile, abusive work environment. So this is the case of ex-San Diego mayor, Bob Filner. I'm going to emphasize ex-San Diego mayor. He was sentenced to three months of home confinement and three years of probation. At first, when this came, he kept saying he was going to stay in office, and he stayed in office maybe for two or three months, and then he finally did end up resigning. And he pled guilty to one felony and two misdemeanors, and so, yes. We've provided some pretty examples throughout this presentation, but we receive complaints with far less serious allegations all the time. One of the things I've noticed about the Me Too movement, you've probably read about the Me Too movement and the Time's Up movement. A lot of times in the media, I have read very egregious examples of sexual harassment, you know, sexual assault, kissing, forced sex, you know? But a lot of times, the harassment complaints that we receive are much lower level. Comments, text messages, emails, you know, like I mentioned, the hugging, touching somebody inappropriately. So people need to be aware that not all harassment are these extreme examples. Harassment can occur in much more, less egregious forms, you know? And a lot of times, harassment allegations arise from casual conduct with other employees or with supervisors, either through conversations, or like I said, we get a lot of complaints when people have to travel together. Some type of casual interaction either in the workplace or outside the work, social settings. So people need to be very aware of what those boundaries are and always behave in a professional, respectful manner, in a dignified manner. Now, a lot of times, and I mentioned before, that people can only file complaints with us if it's based on one or more protected classes, so they feel like the action has been taken because of their race, or their age, or their sex, or their religion, any of those protected classes. Now, last year, we got almost 8,000 contacts from people, people who felt like they had been mistreated in the workplace. But like I said, we can only accept complaints if it's based on one or more of those protected classes. But a lot of times when people call us, they're calling us because they felt like they'd been mistreated in the workplace, but they can't say that it's specifically due to one or more of their protected classes. So a lot of times when people call us, they're calling us about these types of bad behaviors, you know, spreading rumors or talking about others in the workplace, making demeaning comments about others, getting yelled at in the workplace, getting, you know, hands slammed down on desks, or doors slammed after meetings. I had one lady, she called, she said that she worked for a family, and the family gets into an argument, and then they throw stuff at each other. And then she's in a cubicle someplace with the staplers going over her head. Getting called names like stupid, or dumb, or other inappropriate names, profanity in the workplace. We also get a lot of calls about not keeping confidential information, that they have told either a coworker or supervisor, maybe a family issue, or a personal issue, or a health issue, and then they say everybody in the workplace knows about it. We also get a lot of calls about invading people's personal space, you know, standing too close to somebody. We also get a lot of calls, a lot of times when people have to help you with maybe computers, like somebody reaching over them to help them with the computer, or reaching around them to get things off shelves, anything of that nature. We also get a lot of phone calls about either actual physical stalking or cyber stalking. Now, the thing about this, these types of behaviors is that it's a very short walk from any of these types of behaviors to either an actual disparate treatment complaint or an actual harassment complaint. You remember the supervisor at the beginning of the presentation where he was treating the women in a worse manner than he was treating the men? Well, he was displaying these behaviors. He was yelling at the women, he was calling them names when they made mistakes, he was using profanity in the workplace, he was slamming doors. And because that behavior was always directed at women and not the men, we could say that he, his actions were speaking louder than his words. And so that's why we could say that he had engaged in disparate treatment, that he was treating the women worse than he was treating the men. So whenever anybody is engaging in any type of bad behavior, like I said, it's a very short walk from any type of bad behavior to either a disparate treatment complaint or a harassment complaint. So I always use the kindergarten, that if you couldn't do it in kindergarten, you probably shouldn't be doing it in the workplace. So any questions or comments?
So is that an example you gave, that you've been doing that just to women? Have you been doing that to everybody?
Yes.
I mean, that's a different term, but it was still not the level of complaint.
Yes, yeah, well, a lot of times, we do receive complaints and the, you know, not that it's a good defense, but sometimes the employers will write back and say, well, this is a, this is an equal opportunity jerk. They treat everybody badly in the workplace. And that there's a variety of employees, there's a variety of sexes in the workplace, there's a variety of ages in the workplace, there's a variety of national origins, a variety of religion, whatever the protected basis is that's alleged in the complaint, sometimes the employers do write back and say, well, this is an equal opportunity jerk. It's not just directed at more segments of society, one or more protected classes. So. Any, any other questions?
Thank you. I have a question. Excuse me. Did the, have you had an increase in number of complaints in the last nine months, six months with all the media and?
Well, it's interesting. In fiscal year 2016, we had 333 allegations of some type of harassment, either sexual harassment or harassment based on any of the protected classes. In fiscal year 2007, we had 359 allegations. And I checked for fiscal year 2018, if we annualize out the numbers that we'd received through January, we will have received 435 allegations of harassment, either sexual harassment or harassment based on any of those other protected classes. Now, it's interesting that our total number of complaints actually is on an upward trend, but the allegations of harassment are on that upward trend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've taught hither and yon. I've taught what I call the book, everything between Blue Valley and 229 and Young Men in Lockup at the Kelly Detention Center. And I had the privilege of teaching a year at the Kicku Nation School, which is a federal school, Native American school. We had difficulties with the F-bomb students, and it got bad and went to worse. And so I tried to do what I could to interject a couple examples of profanity that weren't appropriate as an example, that did not stem to that at all. I got a book off the shelf at the Johnson County Library that, and I apologize for this, I can clean up a little bit and just say, it was the, I think it was called the A-Hole Factor, spelled out with seven letters. And somebody from Stanford, I think, had written a book about using that term and trying to make points with it. I don't know, it was not particularly effective, but it was a book on the shelf, right there in front of everybody. And so I showed that to my students and tried to talk about it, didn't help. And so this was second semester. I'd gone all through the first semester and watched it gradually get worse. Oh, I don't know, it must have been about this time of year, maybe late February, early March, I got to the breaking point. And my father was a sailor in World War II, and I'm fully capable of cussing a blue streak, and I let him have it, about as blue as you can make it, and talked to this way, certainly by a teacher. And there were some complaints. But the F-bombs went away, not entirely, but, you know, ninety-some percent reduction. So, you know, one of the things I just wanted to observe, and it's hard to talk about because I'm certainly no expert, and I appreciate everything you've given us today because it seems like it's right on the money from the perspective of how we need to treat people with more love and kindness. But there's a, there's a situation that we have to deal with, where we have folks who live in hard, hardscrabble circumstances for which virtually everything you've shared with us has no bearing whatsoever. And these are the folks we're trying to reach. Those are the folks we can't get the needle to reach. We have to move the needle so that we can, you know, get up into the 90s here, and there's, we're in the 60s or 70s, and society is getting less civil. And while we make these rules to help us be more mindful of the need to be civil, there's a, there's a backlash that teachers have to deal with in that, let's say, you're a good teacher and I want you to go into that hardscrabble neighborhood, but you deal with language that's absolutely inappropriate, and you might lose your cool one day, you might have a bad day, and now you're subject to criminal prosecution. We have to do something else than that. And so I just want to acknowledge that as wonderful as it is to have these laws to protect people, there's actually, there's actually a gap that widens because of it. And that's a gap we're trying to close. I just want to mention that.
Yeah, well, I want to let you know also that we do not have jurisdiction over students in educational, in schools. So we would have jurisdiction over the employment, so that would involve the teachers. But if we had, sometimes we do receive calls from parents who feel like their students have been discriminated against, or harassed, or bullied, but we don't have jurisdiction over those activities. We would also have jurisdiction for public accommodation. So like if a school had, say, a drama production or a music production that was open to the public, then we would have jurisdiction over that. But as far as the actual, the students themselves, we wouldn't have jurisdiction over that. But still, employers certainly have the opportunity to set their bar, their expectations, you know, above the anti-harassment. They can set their expectations so that in the employment situation, that people are dealt with in a professional manner, in a respectful manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask, it kind of had to do with students, but it was specifically, it was the sexting that goes on.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, I'm sure it's not just children that do that too, so, but I assume that could fall within harassment at some point in time.
Yes, we get a lot of complaints involving some type of sexting that would be, fall within the employment arena.
Thank you.
Or inappropriate pictures sent, you know, inappropriate comments sent. Like I said, we had, we get complaints where there are pursuing of romantic relationships, asking about clothing, asking about different preferences, all that, either through voicemails, text messages, emails, you know, any way that you, instant messages through the social media, any way that you can communicate with somebody else, we've probably received some type of complaint about it. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you, and you've been a wonderful audience, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Based on like all of us, is that what? Then we're very cringe-worthy?
Well, I hope, I hope not too cringe-worthy, but unfortunately, you know, we do receive those types of complaints, so, thank you very much.
Let's take a 10-minute break and then come back and finish yesterday's debate. Let's reconvene. The next thing on the agenda is individual board members' reports and requests for future agenda items. If you have a report that you would like to give as a board member or request for future agenda items, please use the hand-waving tool, and we'll go in that order. Jim.
Sally's not here yet, and I'm feeling important.
Sally's right behind you.
What am I in a tent?
So pay attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had several, just great opportunities in the last several weeks to see and hear some things that I think fit with our vision and are outside of where we are, but they have great partnerships. One is, I had the opportunity to visit with Diane DeBacher, the Wichita State Innov- One is, I had the opportunity to visit with Diane DeBacher, the Wichita State Innovative Campus. They have an area that used to be a golf course that they have converted into this innovation center and have plans for more. It's hard for me to explain just exactly what an innovative campus is because it's really not much of anything except opportunity. There aren't any particularly formal classes. You know, it's, it has all these tools and expertise that's in the building to move forward, whatever your vision is. I would encourage you at some time, if you're in Wichita, and I would certainly be happy to go with you because I'll go to visit the campus. It's really intriguing. The reason I bring it up is because of our, our trying to redesign schools to think differently. This facility has thought differently. It's to innovation, entrepreneurship, learning, and they have the usual, they have a, all kinds of equipment that I'd never heard of, plus, you know, virtual reality things as well, you know. So if you're in Wichita, but I'd also like to, Mr. Porter, think about inviting the Wichita State Innovative Campus leadership to make a presentation, and I have already spoken with them, and they are, they would be very interested in doing that. A tour would be way better, but, you know, maybe a first look. You know, it really is. All I could think of is the principles, all the ways I could use that facility in all the different times that I have worked with students and teachers in project-based learning.
Thank you.
Just great. The second thing that I had the opportunity, had several opportunities is, and I'll just bring it up, and we all know this, we are faced with a workforce crisis. We do not have the workers necessary to man, the aerospace industry alone in Wichita. Recently, our new governor was in Wichita and announced with Spirit they were going to hire a thousand more people to work in production. And that was, the great story certainly was about a thousand people to be hired, new jobs. But at the same time, the better news for those of us who live there for our state is that Spirit made a commitment to Kansas and to Wichita. And that is, that was the more telling story behind the scenes. But they're faced with the dilemma, as is Techtron, because when I was out at, about a week and a half ago, they have two planes sitting on their really stellar facility, and they're looking, the federal government is looking at buying one or both of those planes, which will probably cause them to hire a thousand more people. They lose about 400 people a year in the aerospace industry that they have, that can hardly replace, you know, and now they're going to add this. This is, this is, this is huge, you know. Hence why Diane DeBacher has been brought back in, and we're excited about that, to be a liaison with business and education to help meet some of those. So they have the immediate needs of hiring, but they also have the long-term. You know, I've been working with Spirit, employment or talent acquisition people. They, Spirit has a mentorship, summer mentorship program that they began last year with 20 students who are actually on the assembly line. They have to be, they're 16 and over. I won't get into all the details, but out of that group, and some of them had already graduated, you know, as seniors and graduated, they hired, I believe, three students right out of that program, right into the factory, and others went back to school. They want to expand that program again this year, so I'm working with them to reach into the Wichita School District as well as to the surrounding areas and helping them understand about career and other issues, because they see this as a multi-phased, multifaceted effort to find employees both for the present and the future. And so I'm setting up meetings and connecting them with career counselors, with superintendents, principals, guidance counselors, TTE, career tech ed folks that they don't know about. But just like I mentioned a moment ago about Spirit, it wasn't just about hiring a thousand more people, but they were going to keep the 21,000 jobs they already have there, there. If Spirit can get kids onto the assembly line, onto the production, and they have navigated the, I don't know how to do it because of insurance and all kinds of other, you know, real or perceived barriers, if they can do it, about anybody can do it. Okay? So they become a real role model for the state. I was so excited that they were going to do this because there's so many businesses that I have talked to, well, I don't know how we do this because there's got to be liability, insurance and stuff. Well, what are they doing? So we've got to learn from them what they've learned so we can move forward. And with our new vision and partnerships and mentorships, this is, I think this is one of the areas we haven't really moved in very aggressively at this point in our vision. So I see this opportunity that we're doing at this time to do that. So Spirit, I'd like to bring the Spirit people up in sometime late spring, early summer, and they're willing to do this, out as well, to tell us about what they're doing and how they're doing it, you know, and not rely on me relaying it in a third-party person. You know, this is really exciting. It seems to be coming together at the right time. You know, I went to a Workforce Alliance conference put on about three weeks ago up here in Topeka. It was, it was great. I, one of the takeaways from that was FDIC. Who'd have known? They have a whole program basically for helping with social literacy. You know, that is free and online, free for teachers, free for students, free for you. You know, and that was just one of the many things. It was a great conference, you know. So, Mr. Chairman, if we could think about, I would coordinate with Spirit and with the WSU folks and even with the Techtron folks to talk about workforce readiness and innovative ways of approaching it in the aerospace industry. And I think that's something we need to look at because our goal should be to help Wichita and the state of Kansas continue to be the air capital and not move it to some foreign state in some place, you know.
Just out of curiosity, and this is not an official, but one of the options that Jim gave in this report would be actually to visit the facility. How many of you would be interested in doing that?
I would certainly coordinate that with.
That appears to be unanimous.
I will, I will.
So maybe that's, maybe that's the approach.
I, we.
Talking about aerospace and the innovation. I'd like to do both. Yes, we're talking about.
Okay, I would do that.
I think this would be a golden opportunity for them down there. We talked about that. Instead of just making the one trip down there, we could have our actual meeting some month, and we could go in. We used to, when we did this, we used to go in on a Monday, and Mondays would be the day that we would tour everything, you know, and even maybe even Wednesday afternoon.
Well, I would think of it in this term, lots of put on a meeting, that this would be one of our, you know, like workshop meetings, you know, or something. But if we had six or more of us there, we'd be in a meeting.
Right. Well, I mean, I just thought this would give us an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone instead of coming to Topeka.
But as we, you know, that, those are options that we can.
I will, I will, and if, at your pleasure, I'd like to include Dr. DeBacher in our experience as well.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Sounds like there's a lot of interest, Jim.
And I have no problem doing, I think this is great. Thank you for being willing to do that. There's one, let alone the change in governor, change in lieutenant governor, but Larry Campbell has moved from the Education Committee out to the Budget Director. I think that's a great move, and I think that, oh my goodness, I'm going to kick myself now because, oh, Stan Weber, no, who's, who took his place on that committee? Fred Patton.
Fred Patton.
Fred Patton. God, I'm sorry, Fred. You know. So we have lots of things. Next, next, what is it, February 23rd, we're going to have Ann and Dina, the expert coming in on finance and talking on February 23rd at 10:00, I believe. Dina, is that right? I think it's 10:00 on Friday.
It's streamed, so.
It's streamed as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the next day, they're going to have the same person talking to school folks, I believe, on Saturday. You know, so if you're available, you might want to come in. We'll certainly be here and helping. What was that? I don't remember the name of the person, but it's, it's the expert that the, Texas or something. Yeah. I don't remember her name. It's, I've got it in here. The, school funding.
School funding.
A study that they did.
She's the one doing the study.
Yes.
For the Senate.
Yeah, they paid her a lot of money to study it, and now she's giving the report back. I'm looking. My memory is not that great. My final thing is, I want to thank you all that were able to participate in the dinner last night. I thought it went very well. There was a nice turnout of representatives, legislative representatives and senators. And I personally learned a lot from our sponsors, you know, I got their cards and the things that they're doing. So it was, it was a win-win-win. So thank you very much for your participation, and I thought the conversations were probably a lot more focused than they were in the past, you know, and certainly the, came to Yak. So we heard a lot. So thank you very much. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ann.
Thank you. The Kansas Advisory Committee on Career and Tech Ed met since our last meeting, and it was a really, really good meeting. I can tell you, the business people on engaged. I think we're still missing a couple spots right now that we probably need to fill, but these folks are involved in helping develop the competencies for our career paths, and they're very much into helping high school students get on track with a career and would even like to see us doing more. This year, we were, I'd asked Eddie Estes to get us involved again in the Workforce Conference that Jim went to because we'd been out of it for a long time, and I noticed last year when I went, there was nobody there from high, from secondary. And you have all these business people, you know, hearing about the junior and workforce centers, you know what they're doing, and I thought they're missing a whole piece of the continuum here. They had no idea what we were up to and what, how we needed them to be involved in what we're doing. So this year, we had a panel, and Randy led that, and it was really good. And we had people there from the department all day with a booth, but I'm hoping we can do even more next year to engage these folks and let them know that we need them coming into our schools and helping us get these kids on track. For a future topic, I would also like us to consider sometime, based on the discussion we had yesterday on race and equity, the school-to-prison pipeline. I think we need to understand if Kansas has an issue, because just about every state does, I think, and we need to find out where we are on that. So, future topic.
Okay, thank you. Janet.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to join our finalists for Teachers of the Year to tour two local districts. One was Turner, one was Shawnee Mission, and then this month, I'm going to go to Leavenworth, and then I'm going to go to DeSoto. So it's exciting. I was only going a half a day to one, but a full day to the other, but I would encourage any of you to contact your local Teacher of the Year finalist, and I'm confident they're doing exactly the same thing, and maybe if they would, I'm sure they'd love to have you, but it was a wonderful opportunity to visit these districts and hear from these, and just be with these teachers that are finalists, and it was really, I was really excited about it. Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin with thanks for the discussion yesterday on race. I know it's just the beginning of a long conversation. We're not going to solve the problems all here, and it was, I just want to point out a couple of books that I read recently. One, I can't remember the name of it, that the author is James Q. Whitman, and the book was about how the Germans in the 1930s sent lawyers here to learn about our race laws. Pretty interesting book. Pretty dicey subject, too, when you think about it. 1930s. In the 1930s, German judges and lawyers came over here to learn firsthand about our race laws. The book doesn't take a position on whether or not our race laws truly influenced the Nazi regime. Maybe they just did that to sort of CYA purposes for shorthand, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting book. The other book I read recently is called White Rage, from Emory University, I want to say Dr. Carol Williams. I may not have her last name correct, but White Rage, and a really good read, perspective from an African-American, refuting that our problems don't come from black rage as much as they actually come from white rage. Same book. The one thing that I would take issue with this particular author is there was at least an undercurrent of the suggestion that white-skinned people take some sort of glee or solace, or satisfaction would be the right word, maybe, of see people struggle. And that's not my experience, but there was a perception of that, and that was an interesting thing to have. I also was privileged to attend the CTE Conference in Manhattan, had great conversations with all sorts of people, lots of teachers, really terrific teachers, shared many of my talking points. Virtually all of them were pretty well-received, if I say so myself. There was one breakout session that I wasn't able to attend, and it was about continuing education and professional development, but the synopsis of it was, must, we must, we must, we must. And I think going forward, we can have some discussions about the arrogance of education because part of that plays into, we're the experts, don't try this at home, when hopefully discussions like we had today, when, yes, we do want people to try this at home, we want everyone involved to make schools work for everybody. The last thing I want to mention is simpler licensure. I, you know, tried to ask Susan yesterday, what would the elements be to truly make it simpler? And it's almost like we can't get there from here. And I think, and it's probably sticking my neck out a little too much, but if it would have been on any other subject where someone presented to us about regs, and they said, well, these regs don't apply anymore, and this is obsolete, and no, we don't want to change it until it's more convenient for us, and all the rest of it, if it had been on any other subject, this person would have been dressed down. Because it was teacher licensure, which is so near and dear to the machinery, we typically don't question it. And I hope going forward, we can question these things more frequently, and I hope we can get to the point very soon, perhaps as early as the rollout of the first phase of the moonshot this summer, when we can actually begin to take concrete steps to make teacher licensure simpler, to address the issues that we're all concerned about, workforce, viability, getting people to work. We have jobs to fill right now, but we keep making the same mistakes about making them more complicated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dina.
I finally got it to come up, so, yeah, because you wouldn't let me talk, otherwise. The first thing that I wanted to point out is the results of Student Voice, our meeting was, is in your. was, is in your packet. And thank you for all of you who stayed after the luncheon and participated with students. I thought the students were much more talkative this year and absolutely had great ideas. And I would suggest that you read through these, and if there's anything you'd like see pursued on behalf of students, that we would take that up. We will be considering other opportunities for students to share their voices. So, you may hear some other things in the future. And I also traveled to, with Randy, to Center and Abilene and to Linsburg. Some of those were presentations to staff. And Ken was at the Linsburg one also. And was a really good response at those. And the Abilene and Clay Center ones were smaller groups, they weren't the entire staff. And again, there was basically questions about how they could become involved with Gemini 2. And so, hopefully, there will be, there's some interest being generated, and we will see some additional apps from District 6 and maybe 7 as well. And last night, at the table that Sally and I were talking to folks, there was the... No, they're Teachers for America. Teach for America. And I was visiting with the gentleman later, and he asked if it would be possible to come and present to the entire board. So, I think there's more to what they do, and so would suggest that perhaps we find some time to invite him to come, or his staff to come. And with that...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't done a lot in travel with Randy to a few schools, I think five maybe, in the past month. But the other thing that, and it's always interesting to go with Randy, especially if he gets an opportunity to actually speak and talk about his vision, it's pretty inspiring stuff. But the opportunity, as did Kathy Bush, to attend a seminar at Smoky Valley by Jenna Quinn. Jenna Quinn was a girl in Texas who was sexually harassed and abused and, over a number of years, and before she got up the courage to make a break and declare what was going on. And it was very devastating and damaging, destructive kind of thing. But it was, it was a family, a close family friend. These two families did everything together. They went to church together, the guys played golf together. And so, they made it more difficult for this girl to come out. But she finally did. And in Texas, they passed Jenna's Law, which is designed to prevent or eliminate this kind of behavior. When I saw what we were, that we were having this sexual harassment training today, I was the subject of it, but it wasn't, and it was, there's no problem. But I think that it would be a really good idea to arrange for a seminar, well, I don't know, how to go about it. I'm sure, I have her Jenna's contact information, and she would be, I would be happy to invite her to come, and I'm sure she would. But I think it's really important. We have, we have a lot of kids that, and I know of a number of them already in my short life, who have been sexually harassed and abused by adults that are close friends or something like that. And there are some very definite signs that would help teachers to identify those signs and do some further inquiry to find out what's going on. Because these kids are helpless. They don't, you know, it's far above their maturity level to handle, and it's very devastating to them. This girl went from being a straight-A, loving-school kid to just, to basically flunking out and gain weight so she wouldn't be attractive to this guy who was harassing her. So, it's a really serious thing. So, if there's interest in having Jenna come and present to the board, her actually, I'm sure she has a shorter presentation, but she presents to schools and all kinds of organizations, trying to raise awareness of this. Because I, I think that it's something that we need to look at, too. And teachers, I believe, need to how to identify those, those warning signs that something is going on. So, it was, I thought it was very good. I don't know how Kathy felt about it, but I thought it was a really great conference. And I learned quite a bit from it, and bought her book, which is very good as well. So, I think, yes.
And that, that particular subject is exactly the impetus for the starting of the School Mental Health Advisory Committee to deal with exactly that issue and other issues like that. And we will be, and they're, they're already working toward training and things like this. So, I think we're well down that road because it is extremely serious. I think we all, like you, know people that have been, that have had their lives, not only for that, but for a number of other adverse childhood experiences. And, and instead of looking at ways to do, you know, do training just on sexual harassment or just on suicide prevention, to do things that are comprehensive, because there are a lot of similarities, there are a lot of differences, but there are a lot of similarities. And we want to look at the whole child and all the things that make that. But I appreciate your comments, and you're dead-on right.
Yeah, thank you. Well, it might be that this, the committee that we have would be benefited by calling her in, because I think she could give you some very helpful, she's done a lot of, a lot of work on preparing and knowing how to present, the science, to look for, and all that other thing. So, that was very good. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might follow up a little bit, because Ken and I were at that presentation. It was very good. I've been in contact with Jenna, and I've also, she's put together a...
Oh, yeah.
Information, different possible training curriculum. So, one of the things that I think the Advisory Council, and the training curriculum is a little bit more for children than it is adults, although I think they have some adult. So, we're going to be looking at that and vetting that, and probably be bringing recommendations to the Advisory Council, and then that Advisory Council will bring recommendations here. I've also had contact recently with Erin from Erin's Law, and so she and I are going to have a phone conversation fairly soon, and, because I think both Jenna have some valuable information about child sexual abuse, and they have some training that they call personal safety training, which I thought was an interesting, good way to describe it. So, we are going to be working on that and bringing information to the board.
Thank you, Kathy, for bringing that up. I remember our conversation now, and she had several curricula that we could look at and approve, if we decided to approve, and recommend them as approved curricula for the kids, right?
Yeah, seeing no other... There is a state-sponsored computer that you could use that plugs in. Sally?
Oh, sorry, that my computer ran out of zip. I just want to follow up on what Deena said on the individual that we were sitting at at the table. He had gone before the Senate Ed, that committee, and we informed him, the, that we did all the licensure and everything. And he looked up at me, and he says, "Are you telling me I went before the wrong body?" I said, "I think so." Then, it's just one more example of how we operate different in this state from other states, and he's used to operating differently. The thing I found out from him is that Teach for America and the programs they have designed are really meant for more of a metropolitan area. And so, but, you know, maybe you all need to hear him. Steve, I hear you on licensure, and I want you to know that on the TVS, that's not the whole committee's name, Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee that Kathy and I are on, we talk about simplifying every time we meet. And we think that doing that, it just looks complicated because we're having to change so much. But we are simplifying and causing, creating much more flexibility, and maybe I see it because I've been on so long. You know, from where we started 11 years ago and where we are now, it is a big difference. And so, we, we're working on that. I don't think we're there yet. I agree with you. I want to put the word "or" in something, and I haven't been able to get that done yet. Ken, your recommendation on this speaker? I've also listened to a speaker that is for kids, and it's on migrant, she was a migrant person, and how she talks to kids about leadership, which goes right along with our goals and on our social, emotional goals. What I'm hearing us coming up with is, I don't know, but the schools already may have something of a lecture series that they can, that we could recommend these people to be part of their lecture series. Person I'm thinking of, I want the students to hear, and I think the students might need to hear yours. And so, I'm not so sure, throw out the idea of, we come up with three or four names that we encourage as a lecture series, and somehow bring them in for the schools, that they could travel around the state as a lecture series. I don't know how that's funded, I don't know anything about it, but I think what we're hearing are these lectures of, that would be good to meet the goal of social, emotional. Do the schools have a lecture series? Some do. Because I also know of a gal from Colorado that was on her way to be a singer and a dancer and had a horseback and about pulled her foot off. And she had to completely change her direction, and she talks about your image and your self-image. And so, I've got about three of them, counting what Ken said, that I'd like to put on a lecture series. And then, I attended migrant, interstate migrant. I attended it for three hours because I had to come back for a very special board meeting. But what I did find out is that in the immigration laws, and the, some migrant laws may be looked at, too, because it's, everything is so tied together with the visas and the immigration and the, that we may be looking at changes. But I, sometimes, we don't get to brag on our own personnel. And you guys don't get to work with Doug very often. And he is head of our migrant and title, some title programs. And he's such a quiet man, and unassuming, but man, when you sit in that interstate migrant meeting with him, with him, those people want to know what he thinks. And we, by far, are not the largest state of migrant workers. But we have a team that's put together in the state of Kansas, excellent migrant people helping us, and you ought to know that we are very much respected in the field of migrant and what we're doing. And I just wanted to bring his name up to you and let you know that we have one more person that we can be really proud of on our staff.
Thank you. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After all this discussion, a couple of other things have come to my mind that I'd like to bring up. A month or so, I think maybe last month, I believe, I received a letter from a group in Lawrence. Brad, you probably got a copy of that, didn't you? I sent it to Randy, and it was going to go to the social-emotional standards. Anyway, the letter was, these girls wrote this letter about sexual bullying, and how they did not recognize, they felt like girls should be trained in what really sexual bullying was. You know, so talking about the sexual abuse thing, I think, and Randy had talked about maybe even bringing the girls up here someday to introduce them, but if we ever did something like that, I think these girls should be included, because I thought they had an excellent idea. I referred them to, and they invited them, you know, to come to Leavenworth. That's a curriculum thing, of course. But nevertheless, I really thought that was an excellent idea. So, you know, I'd like to make sure I, all of you knew about what I received. And the second thing I wanted to talk about, that teacher licensure. I want you all to understand, and I think you all know, certainly Ken does, how long, how far we've come since, well, even any of you, since I've been on the board, you know, because licensure has always been a challenge, but we walk a very fine line. And I want that to always be understood because that's something extremely important. We want to remove barriers. That's absolute, but we need to retain quality. You know, because if you, if you remove too many barriers, then you're going to let anybody... I mean, I'm sorry, there's certain, there's a, we have high-quality teachers right now. We have a wonderful, high-quality of teachers, and I want to maintain that, but yet I want to remove the barriers. So, I think we need to be very cautious as we move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion.
A motion would not be in order unless we adjust the agenda.
Oh. Then I won't make a motion.
Is anything else? The chairman's report, there are a number of, something, something that I'm sort of excited about is more and more organizations in the community are asking us to participate in their, they're inviting us into their organizations. We, we need to appoint, two of them, we need to appoint a person to serve on the board of the Activities Association. That's the spot that I currently hold. And I will step down from that, and Deena Horst has agreed, if that is approved by the board, to do that. It doesn't start until July the 1st. We, we're not going to, you know, to be consistent with, I just told Steve, we're going to, it's going to be on the agenda next month. Kathy Bush is term as member of the Exec... Kathy Bush's term as member of the Executive Board, they want it, but they, we're going to be consistent. They'll have to wait. Because the term doesn't start until July the 1st. Kathy Bush's term Executive Board is also expiring, she is eligible for another term. And I'm going to recommend that we appoint her. There is a Strategic Planning Committee from the Department of Health that is dealing with the opioid, opioid crisis. And they have asked for a member of the Board of Education to be on that. I have asked Janet Waugh to serve on that, and she has agreed to do so. I don't believe that requires action. No snide remarks about opioids and Janet. And the state's fire marshal has asked us to be, to have somebody on their advisory committee that, because they're reviewing safety and building codes related to school districts, and Ann Maugh has agreed to serve on that, and I don't believe that requires action. But the two state high school activities do, and they'll be on the agenda next month. Is anybody going to the NASB conference on judicial conference besides me? Well, I'll report back whenever. I want to add to what Jim said, and thank you for your participation last night. I thought it was a very good meeting. I also attended the, like Janet was talking about, the semifinalist for Teacher of the Year in Altoona, the metropolis of Altoona, and that was, I thought, a very positive experience. One thing I'm really looking forward to is that I'm going to be able to make a brief presentation at the KMEA Kansas Music Educators Association, where I will be making a presentation to new music teachers on the 24th of February, and I'm looking forward to that. I think you need to remember that I'm the only one that gets to be a smart aleck. And that's the end of my report. And now we will deal with travel. Anybody have additional travel? Anne.
Yeah, just one, there's a Baldwin School Education Foundation breakfast, what's that, the March? It's coming up in a couple of weeks, Peggy has the date, but I just need mileage for that, so.
Anything else?
And the cost of the lunch.
I have mileage that I provide, or opportunities that I've given to... I'm going to be with Miss Spirit and career counselors, and as I said in my report, you know, next week. And I'm supposed to be in Topeka and Emporia next Friday, so we'll figure that out. That one's the physical education, health and physical education, and also we have our speaker here, so I'll be someplace.
And anybody else, Janet?
Sorry, put me down also, Peggy, for that Baker Baldwin thing. I'm not positive I can go, but put it down, just in...
And, you know, we reported that Randy and I have had with the leadership of the House and Senate to try to work out this audit stuff. There may be multiple times that I have to come back to meet with those, so I need to have that on there.
Ken, if we want to come in for that 27?
February 25th. That's a Friday and Saturday?
That's the, the report from A and M, as you're talking about.
Yes.
Who else, I'll be, that's where I'll be at KMEA, so I can't be there, who else? Dina and Sally?
I plan on coming in. Also, I know Randy is going to be doing some traveling in my district, but I don't have the dates. I know, I've been told that they're working on that, so I'm just assuming there may be some that will be before the next meeting, so.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you, I would like to respectfully ask for a future agenda item next month, if we could consider, not mentioning any numbers, but a nominal discussion of the pay for our commissioner, if we could put that on the agenda next month.
And I'm glad to not having already addressed that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Didn't the motion would be in order to approve the travel, Kathy, and, and Ken, and Jim, and everybody? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed, nine zero. Welcome to the table, Brad. Is that Brad? We are adjourned.